Pledge of Allegiance. Been a long day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion, please, to accept the agenda for this evening?
We're circling. Do you want me to do that?
Sub move.
That was the point.
Both of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Now I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Harrison for district updates, news, and events.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you here tonight. You know, tonight's one of those moments, I think, where I sit back and just really feel proud about things that are going on and the good work that's occurring in our district. Whether we look to the audience and see leaders from elementary schools that are here to talk about the great work that's happening with Common Core across the board in both of the elementary schools, you look at high school team and guidance department and look at the things that are happening there for our children, there's really great opportunities for us to sit back and be appreciative, and I don't know if that I'm still in the Thanksgiving spirit, but I think we need to take that opportunity to be grateful for the things that are going on in our schools and the talented people that are leading this important work for our children. And I have to say that the work doesn't end in the classroom and in the schools, and you know, we look at things that are happening at all different angles around the district. And certainly want to acknowledge something that Bev has been working on, certainly with the board's support, going back to September, I think it's September 10th, the board approved the refunding of the 2004 series capital bonds. At that point in time, we had conservative estimates on the amount of money that would be saved over the duration of the-
Was that your refinancing?
The refinancing, yes.
It's a refund, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, refinancing. And at that time, we were estimating that there would be a savings of about $325,000 over the course of eight years. And we're proud to say and happy to say that today that process is coming to a close, but rather than $325,000, we're looking at a figure that is just north of $817,000. So when you look at that savings, that's something that's impactful, something that impacts taxpayers and finances for the overall school district. So that's certainly some wonderful news.
Over what period of time did you say that was, Chris?
Eight years. Eight years. So certainly, that is some wonderful news, something to be thankful for. When we think about, you know, the initiative and the work that we've done on student safety we focus, then primarily our actions and work in the schools, but there's little things that are constantly going on. If you look outside the building at the intersection right out here, next to the entrance to Mizarro's Field, right after the stop signs and the drop off area, we had new lights installed there today, which it's been a dark intersection for a long period of time after the street light had been knocked down numerous times. So we're glad to see the progress there on that front. Next week, we have a special Board of Education meeting in this room at 7:30 where we start to talk about more progress, and this is progress dealing with our field. We're going to begin to delve into the resolution for East Field. If you recall, going back to the summer of 2012, we were spending time talking about a vision and developing a plan to address needs at Mizarro's Field, and in the process we identified the concerns that were present at East Field. So now we're looking forward to some progress there and begin to identify what the appropriate resolution will be there, and then start to move forward again with other field and facility initiatives. Really a theme of progress, a lot of quality work that's happening in every corner of the district with so many people involved, and something to be so proud of. As I said, tonight, we have two great presentations about the wonderful work that's happening in our schools, and that's going to roll into the next regularly scheduled Board of Ed meeting in two weeks, where we're going to hear similar news about what's happening at the middle level with Common Core there and start to talk about athletics and PE. There's a lot of wonderful things going on in our district, and I think we have much to be proud of, and I think tonight's presentations will certainly reinforce that positive work. I think it gives us an opportunity to sit back and learn from the people that are feet on the ground, heads, minds, hands in the classroom, working with our children. So I think it's really, really great signs of the good work that's going on. Dr. Core, do you want to share the one technology piece that you've been working on?
Sure. So I just wanted to share an update. A couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, I talked a little bit about the Quad Village Initiative where we're partnering with Dobbs, Hastings, and Artsley to offer our teachers in all our districts opportunities to engage in technology courses, learning how to integrate or learning other ways to integrate technology in the classroom. And so where we are right now is we actually collected all the courses that we have teachers who are able to teach, and we sent out a survey, and we are now collecting data to find out what teachers would be interested in learning more about and learning in their classroom. So I guess I just wanted to share a couple of examples. I think you might know that we are a district that is working in a flipped classroom model, so we have a cohort of teachers who are learning how to flip their classroom, where students are looking at videos of their teachers at home, and then when they come into class, the teacher is more actively involved in the learning and the needs and meeting the needs of students. So that would be something that we would be offering, but I just wanted to give you a few examples. So using Twitter in the classroom, using Skype, pushing the walls of collaboration outside your building, promoting digital organization, iBooks Author, technology to reach Common Core literacy requirements, assistive technology, iMovie. So the range, because we're working with the Quad Village, the range of what we're going to be able to offer our teachers is so much more expansive than what we would have been able to do if it was just Irvington hosting within district. So the other really good news about this is our partnership with the Teacher Center is supporting this. So all of this work will be done through the Teacher Center, and I know last year we had questions about how effective was it, was that something that was worthwhile for us to belong to, was it a resource that our teachers took advantage of? So again, you know, Dr. Harrison talked about having those dollars, stretching our dollars. I think this is a great example of how we are promoting really good professional learning and partnering with our neighbors and making use of the Teacher Center all at the same time. So we're excited. We think it's going to be a great opportunity for teachers.
Thank you. And then just a few couple reminders. Our first winter concerts tomorrow night, band at 7:30, middle school, high school band that is. And then we have the middle school, high school winter course and orchestra concert on the 18th, right down across the campus, so we hope you're able to come out and see the great work of our students and the talented staff that are leading their efforts. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Very well.
I guess we're going on now, I don't know who had raised this initially or who wants to start out, but we wanted to discuss a bit the long-range planning proposal. I guess this is in relation to the RFP that was put out to assist us. Phil, do you want to, or John, do you want to lead us out from there?
I actually, I have nothing more to add. I thought you were going to comment on some of the things that you've been working on. The additions to the-
Well, let me just kind of try to-
Yeah, I want you to frame the issue and, yeah.
So there was a board, you know, generally supported the idea of bringing, I'd say generally not unanimously supported, the idea of providing a consultant to facilitate it in various ways and provide various services related to the long-term developing of a strategic plan, which basically amounts to a series of goals and objectives for the next few years. An RFP was developed. We got proposals way back in the summer, but we, Chris, I believe, determined that we needed, the lawyers determined that we needed to go through an RFP process, so that was done. An RFP went out. My understanding is that we essentially got one, actually only one response to the RFP, which isn't surprising because we've been in contact with this since already. The one that we got back was from the firm we were, we were interested in anyway, which is ECR, which is based out of Illinois. The couple of the issues that I was concerned with is that, and this is probably because we were comparing what they had proposed to us with what they had done for other districts. The proposal includes focus, a set of focus groups with, I hate the term stakeholder, but I think that's the easiest shorthand here, with various stakeholders from faculty to, I think, students, community members. Some issue whether it would be cross-section of the community as opposed to community leaders, but that's probably not material for accepting the bid. The thing that is somewhat material is the surveys that they would do for the 25,000 are surveys of administration, faculty, and parents, staff, I guess, too. And not survey, to do surveys of the community more broadly would be extra money that, along the planning committee, Phil, myself, Chris, don't think is worth spending. And also extra money to do a survey of students. So we've been talking about, the committee has been talking about doing those sort of surveys on perhaps a less formal way of, kind of, do our own outreach to the community and to students in some way. So my thought is to go forward with this without trying to do anything beyond the basic. We're not going to add any of the extra options. Just like when you buy a car, when you start adding the extra options, it starts getting much more expensive. And so we're talking about the basic version. There was one other issue that now I'm blanking on that came up.
So what are the specific outcomes that we will get at the end, when they're all said and done and the campus report, what specifically are they going to include in that report?
We will get, my understanding is we'll get survey, we'll get survey results, and we'll get some, I guess some summary of focus groups, though they don't actually know. We'll get some data analysis of district test scores, which is something that I tended to feel is not going to be particularly useful for us, but it's part of what they do. Then we'll get, through, I guess, some sort of a facilitated process, we'll get district goals, district, perhaps a revised district mission statement if we choose to revise it, that kind of thing, a series of goals and objectives for-
So they'll think, yes.
The planning period that the strategy will cover, which I don't know, maybe that's five years.
They will work with us.
To craft-
Yes.
The long-term strategic plan, long-term strategic goals.
Yeah.
And the other issue is-
Timing.
Right, was one of the, yeah, timing. The timing of this would, necessity, and I think that's part of the virtue of getting a consultant in, is that it would be relatively tight. And the virtue of that is that we, you know, if left to our own devices, we'll get this done, especially with the five volunteer board members, we'll have just trouble getting to this stuff. They would start the process of talking to the board this month if we sign early enough. And they would do focus groups in January, surveys, I believe, in February, and they deliver the final products by the end of April.
The problem there, obviously, is that we'll be in our budget process in March and April, so there will definitely, we will have to carve out time in that process to talk about the things that are important to the district on a long-term basis, even as we're focused on following year from a budget standpoint. It's not impossible, it's just not ideal.
Right. The only other realistic alternative is to delay it until next fall.
I guess what you're saying about how, I mean, I didn't realize it was so survey-heavy, I guess. And I guess the other thing is, when you say they don't include community members and students, and I guess that's really-
The surveys.
In the surveys, but they're using the-
The surveys that they're feeling because-
Data to drive, I mean, it's really interesting, because I actually feel like the community really drives the vision and the mission of the schools, and kind of the process you just described, it's kind of flipped, like the-
Parents are-
Parents are survey.
Parents will be surveying.
Parents will be surveying.
Yes.
But not community members at all.
Because we can contact parents by email, we can't contact the entire community by it.
Right, right.
And the methodology sort of matters in that regard.
Parents will be a part of that, okay. Just interesting that, it just seems like it's much more administration staff, which is fine, I'd like to include everybody, but I always ultimately feel like the pulse of Irvington is not, it's kind of, it's what surrounds us and not what puts it out.
That's true. I mean, putting that aside, though, I think part of it is it's a money issue, right? One of the reasons I thought that you guys had recommended these folks after doing the interviews was not only were, could they do basically what we wanted them to do, but they could do it for the $25,000 number that we were thinking about. So we could clearly spend more money, I don't think I'm in favor of that. But, you know, I know that also we received bids from other sort of non-school-related companies that were into the six figures to do, you know, a similar project. Was it one? Yeah.
Well, it's not a non-school-related thing. It's not a, it was not an organization that's in the business of doing this kind of thing for public schools.
Right, 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 right. So I think it's a question of how much we want to spend, or if we still think it makes sense. But I personally think it does make sense just for the focus and the organization.
Just to be clear, community members can participate in the open forums.
Okay.
Right, so it's not like those are going to be-
Right, okay.
Right.
And I think we should, I definitely think we should figure out, you know, separate from this process, how to do more community outreach as part of this process. And also find a way to get more students.
Right.
And I'm kind of in a bit of, you know, I'm kind of trying to do, play two different roles, wear two different hats on this. On the one hand, I don't think, overall, the consultant is the best way to go for this, but given that that's where the rest of the board wants to be, I say, fine, I think this is the consulting firm of the three that we talked to. And, you know, I know I went and talked to various other districts to find out what they did and who might have been using it.
What did you speak to in other districts?
I don't remember. Was that by training, when I went, when I did my board training, I went to people like Scarsdale, Bronsville, I forget, some others did.
Those did, sure.
And, you know, I've gone online and looked at some other districts all over the country that I know of, or were told about that, you know, well-regarded districts. So I don't, it's not that I know of other consulting firms out there, and I think we're a little bit, I know there's a sentiment in the community that somehow we're being steered to ECR, and I honestly don't believe that we're being steered there. Of the firms that we talked to, they're the ones that, you know, will deliver the most in the process. They have hard output and surveys, like test results, that other firms don't necessarily hear us. Beyond that, you just don't know what we're going to accomplish.
Yeah, I kind of, you know, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, I clearly agreed that if we want to get it done, I think hiring an outside firm was the only way to go, and it seemed like what you're saying is, for the obvious reasons of what you said, seemed like the best alternative, given where we were. I definitely have some concerns, but I guess since we want to get it done and we'd like to see it done, and, you know, I guess then it's just up to us as a board and the administration together to figure out, you know, how best to manage them, so we get out of it, you know, something really useful that we can work with moving forward, so.
And I just want to emphasize, too, that the problems that John raised, the challenges with respect to surveying students, community members, surveying students is by far the easier of those. I mean, because we have our own population that we can easily email or contact to fill out a survey and get their anonymous feedback. That's what Zoomorang and countless other tools are there for, Survey Monkey or-
And then it's beginning in English, right?
Well, then it's anonymous, but, you know. But in case, there's, it's, that's easy. The part that's a little bit more of a challenge is getting community members as a whole to comment in an anonymous survey, simply because community members don't generally do that.
No, no, no.
It's not that we can't set it up, it's just that if you think about the cost that we would have to pay ECR to develop the survey, and then we'd have, you know, a survey designed, how are you going to get people to come and fill out the survey?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should try to think up, figure out, we should talk to everybody about what kind of questions we would want to ask the community broadly, and that, you know, there are different, there are different kind of groups in the community that we'd want to reach out to, perhaps in different ways, senior citizens in the community, for example, but they would recontact them differently, probably with, say, parents, preschools.
Yeah, there also is, I know it was typed up, when we did these community conversations a few years back, they definitely had a lot of note-taking that went on and a lot of backup, and it might actually be information that would be useful to the company to provide a little background. I'm not saying things haven't changed, but it might give them a little bit more insight as to, you know, where we were a few years ago, what the hot buttons were for the community, because there was a lot of time spent doing that, and there was, it was about four or five years ago?
Six, seven, or seven, eight?
Seven? Yeah, I mean, some of it might be dated, but you definitely get a sense, it's just, yeah, I mean, I think it's worth a read, because it's all typed up for the company to do, just to get the background as to the pulse of the community.
A public agenda.
I can't hear you.
She said the first, the community conversation happened after the first.
That is a long time ago, yeah.
Is it, you're sorry that we can't reach the community to do the online survey?
We could build a survey in Survey Monkey or Zoomorang. You would need to then encourage people and fill it out. It's that process of getting people to do that.
And it's just much harder to get that to be represented. It's still be interesting, it still would be interesting to do that.
Yeah.
And it's not that, we just didn't want to pay ECR to do that-
Right.
Because then if you're going to pay ECR, they're just all $10,000, you get 15 responses, that's not exactly a very, and remember, the challenge of getting people to take the survey, that's our challenge. ECR doesn't have a magic system for getting people to take surveys.
Right.
We have to design our own push mechanism to get people to do it.
Yeah, I think ECR's deal is, we have to give them a list, and, again, it's-
I mean, we could send a survey to every single person in Irvington, and that would cost us $30,000 right there, and postage costs, mailing costs, or whatever the number is. What does it cost to send the newsletter to, the budget newsletter to people?
About $3,000.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
Three to four thousand.
Five, three or four thousand.
Bev just saved us another $26,000. Okay, great. I guess moving on, I'd like to go to community comment on topics that appear on the agenda. Normal rules and caveats apply.
Can we ask what that means?
What's that?
When you say what's on the agenda, we're also talking about the two presentation-
Well, one of those we always reserve for, yeah, questions and stuff like that when we get there. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
There's a difference.
Yeah, it's basically the business procedures, and usually, when it comes to larger presentations, we always tend to reserve for comment and questions as they happen, because the material's fresh. Sir?
Richard Cole, I have a couple of things. About the consultant, I think, I've said this before, I'm against it. I think it's a waste of money. I don't think that you're really getting a lot for what you're paying. Also, in terms of the questions that John just brought up about, you know, finding out from the community what questions we should ask, and it seemed to me, having done social research for 15 years professionally, that you would come up with those questions prior to hiring a consultant, because depending on what your questions are as a board, in terms of what you want from the community, that would direct, you know, what the consultants would be looking for. And without that information, you're really wasting your money. And so as a board and as a community, you might want to come up with these kind of questions, vague directions, before spending $25,000, which will only lead you to a place where you're going to have to spend another $25,000, because you didn't give the consultants the right parameters to start with. On a totally different subject, I was completely offended by Dr. Harrison's report, to be honest. I understand that there's a certain, there's a job for people in a district to be upbeat and to present a positive face for the district, but after the last Board of Education meeting, I really find it honestly to be offensive to be so chipper about the state of our district. The numbers that came across in the student progress report were abysmal, really just, I was shocked. I mean, I had spoken to a few people, I read an article in New York Times, and I knew that the SAT scores were as low as they are, but when I saw how low the SAT scores are, how low the percentages of students getting 85% or better on the regions, considering the amount, consider, forget the money, it's just abysmal regardless of the money. When you take into account the money, it seems to me criminal. Obviously, it's not a crime, but to my mind, morally, it's criminal. And to me, if I were on the board, I would think that that would be the main focus of every darn meeting until we figure this out. I mean, why is this district, which is an affluent district, and money doesn't buy everything? At this point in our economy and the way the world's going, the fact that we live in a wealthy district does not secure your children's success in life, and the fact that they're doing so poorly will affect their success in life. In general, our numbers are really abysmal. And to me, it's alarming to me, the numbers are so low, it's alarming to me that it doesn't seem that you guys are taking it more seriously. I mean, talking about, you know, fields and dances and, you know, concerts, these are all nice things, but we had, the main goal of a school district is to educate. Playing the flute and, you know, kicking a soccer ball are all nice, but if the kids can't read and they can't write and they can't do arithmetic, we have failed them. And the numbers say that we are failing them, and it really is alarming to me.
I generally reserve comment, but I have to say, Mr. Cole, while your comments are heard and received, I think you miss the spirit of the work that we do. We work diligently for every child, for children that reside in under your roof, and we are doing great work in our schools. When we look at a student's performance report, we look at indicators, that is one single measure of student success, and I'm going to tell you that I am not going to ignore the good work that happens in our theater, that happens on our athletic fields. Those are responsibilities that we do hold to educate and provide those experiences for our children. Our children in Irvington continue to go on to excellent schools, our children go on and are successful. This is a place where people want to move to, not just because it's a beautiful town, a historic village, but because we have fine schools. We look at those tests, there's a lot of themes that were discussed, a lot of details that were presented by Dr. Core to talk about the inconsistencies. We'll be the first to acknowledge when there's work to be done, when there's room for improvement, and we have done that, and we are doing that work. But I'm not going to undermine the work of my colleagues, and I'm not going to realistically sit back and say that our schools are failing. You know, we're in a state of continuous improvement, like everybody else, and we're going to find ways to do more, we're going to find ways to do better by our children, we're going to prepare them for different ways to be successful in their future. And a part of that equation is looking to enhancing our test scores, certainly, because that is a measure of some indicators of success. But we're going to look at our children holistically, we're going to continue to provide more opportunities for them to be successful, to be exposed to new ideas, to be exposed to new experiences, and hopefully open their eyes to some things that they may not see otherwise. But our bottom line and our commitment is that we're going to provide the best experience we possibly can for every single child that is in our care. We acknowledge that there's room for improvement, but our schools are fine schools, and we are going to continue to do good work. My enthusiasm before is because of my joy of working in your community. My enthusiasm is because of the prideful way in which I was communicating the good work that I see of my colleagues that are working on behalf of our children and behalf of this community. So where I certainly accept the comments that you make, and I hear them, I stand by what I said, and I would say it again, this is an excellent school district, and we're going to continue to do good work for our children.
I hear what you're saying, and I would like to point out, and if you want, next meeting or else email your references, for the last 40 to 50 years, social scientists and social psychologists have said the single greatest indicator of any child's success is their- greatest indicator of any child's success is their SAT scores. This has been proven repeatedly, that if you want to come down to one measure that will estimate the success of a child, the SATs are it. And our SAT scores are really low.
I mean, just to, I mean, I just want to say one thing is, I hear what you're saying and to some degree my reaction is, you know, about low region scores, numbers above 85. I think that what I would take from that isn't that we're not doing all this work, because I think we are doing a lot of work. But I think what you're saying maybe is we really need to figure out what our priorities are, which is somewhat dovetails into the strategic plan, like it or not. And, you know, and if it's really in the classroom, you know, figuring out what they're getting and where we're deficient, that clearly maybe needs to move up on the scale of priorities. I mean, so I kind of agree with that. But I wouldn't say it detracts from anything that Chris said or all the great work that everyone's doing, but I think it's all part of this process as to how do we focus our energies, where the priorities were, what are the priorities? And that's kind of what I hope we're going to figure out, so.
And I think an important part of that process is the community beginning to understand better what our priorities need to be from an educational standpoint, too. I think there's different sets of priorities and to look at priorities that come from objectives from the community, what the community, what the board desires of its schools. And we can look at overall experience, you could talk about character education, you could talk about any number of things that tie into that. And there could be different measures of that type of success. But there also needs to be conversation about what good teaching looks like, what high-quality learning experiences looks like. And I think that the administration, the staff, is making a diligent effort to get that word out there. We're trying to demonstrate what we're doing and to show what that good work does look like. So I agree, and Rob, my comments weren't meant to be contrary. But I think it's a part of a process and a process that we look forward to.
And last week when we had that up, we bring up the presentation on the student achievement. You know, one thing I was trying to struggle with, which is, I don't think there's an easy answer to the question, is how do we look at numbers in these metrics and figure out how do we assess whether this district, it is an affluent district, really provides as much value added for the money we spend for the education? And test scores, there's lots of different ways to slice that. Definitely tells us part of the venture. And I don't know if we, I certainly don't think we've done as much of analyzing those piece of stuff that we could see here as we can. But when you think about what it is that the one district to be, what it is that, you know, it's definitely multifaceted, it's definitely strong education. But when you think about, these are kids that start here when they're five years old and go through the 18, that's a big chunk of their life and that's almost their entire childhood. And we're providing a lot for those kids. It's our job to provide a lot to those kids. And strong education is part of that, but it's definitely not common.
Any other comments from the community, questions? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda dealing with items in section seven, eight, nine, and 10, I just want to take time to specifically thank folks who have donated this week. Made donations that we're going to hopefully accept in a few moments. Michael Glance, the PTSA, who is constantly finding ways of donating to our schools. And I want to point out specifically, there was an anonymous donor who was approached, I guess as a way to say, with an issue. We have some sporting equipment, weight, gym equipment that's outdated and needed to be replaced to the tune of about $22,000. And this anonymous donor decided to earmark and give the district $22,000 out of their pocket to purchase new gym equipment for our students. And so I think that's a wonderful thing and we all owe a debt of gratitude to that Irvington resident who did so and in such a magnanimous way of not even wanting their name associated with it. So I will say thank you on behalf of the board and the district and thank you, thank you. Anything in the consent agenda that we want to speak about specifically and pull out?
I have a few questions on, I think it's...
Go for it.
Well, a couple of minutes, first of all, there are issues with, I mean, I, they're corrections or things, I don't know how to address that. I'll send a few, the October, the first and the third minutes, it's October 22nd. One substantive thing is...
Do you want those to be tabled?
Probably.
Because so we could see the revisions, yes. So we'll take seven one and seven three out.
Right, and I'll just work out the... I have questions on, I have a very quick question. There's an appointment of a school monitor down there. Can you just very quickly explain what a school monitor is? We have security. So what is a school monitor?
A school monitor is an individual that supervises our children at lunch and recess.
So they're recess monitors?
Correct.
And I have a question, I don't know if we're on this yet or not, on the financial statement? We got a, the financial statement shows our tax receipts, right, for the, we got for this. Was there, is there a, you know, we're retiring as part of that, didn't we take out a tax on this issue now?
Yeah, that would be paid off in November, that was paid off in November.
It was paid, it's been paid off, okay. And that was done with the proceeds, largely with the proceeds of the, of the, of the tax.
Just out of curiosity though, now that you said that, how much do we spend on monitors per year? I actually didn't remember that we had that in there.
It's certainly not a number that we have off the top of our head.
I know, you wouldn't know off the top of your head. I didn't realize that we actually had regular monitors that we just hired for lunch and recess. I thought all of our aides and teachers handled that, I didn't realize that.
We certainly do have other staff members that assist in the supervision. But due to contractual requirements, the amount of time that teachers have for lunch and so forth, that there's that necessity to employ other folks to supervise the children. And as far as I know, that's always, I don't know how long that's been in place, but it's always been in place.
At Main Street, they're on, at Main Street, the aides don't do lunch there, that's there, they need to eat lunch.
When I walk by Main Street, it's like, because of the derailment, I work from home, but I walk by Main Street during recess, there are about four, at least four adults outside.
I guess maybe for budget, I'd just be curious to see that broken out, since I wasn't, I knew we talked about a bunch of things with budgets, but I don't remember that ever coming up in a while.
Okay, I guess can I then get a motion to accept the consent agenda with the note that we'll be tabling and we're actually removing seven one and seven three until the, I guess, the next meeting pending John's, pending John's comments?
Said moves.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. We're going to move on to certain presentations now. I don't want to be a burden. I have to leave to take an international call for my paying job after nine. So I apologize to the community and everybody here, but that's why I'm jumping out when I do. Dr. Harrison?
Very good. So first up tonight is going to be a presentation on our 612 guidance program. And, you know, I think it's important to note when we think about this presentation, we think about changing dynamics. We have very strong guidance counselors that have been leading the way and working in the great interest of our children for a number of years, but we've had changes in leadership. And with those changes in leadership, there's interest about the work that's going on now. And so when we think about the great work that's here and maybe that it's that theme of continuous improvement that I touched on before. But we're looking to see what we need to do to continue to enhance all the great things that are happening, guidance to find new opportunities for our kids and to continue to make sure that they're as well-prepared for college as we possibly can. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Cohen, who will take over from there and introduce his team that are going to give us some insight into the program and the work that you're all sharing at the high school this year.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harrison, and thanks to the board for welcoming us tonight. And we're really excited to be here. And we see this as a great opportunity to really start to share some of the work that's been going on at the high school, specifically around guidance and some of the comprehensive focus and functionality that they're putting forth around it. I want to just introduce Deb Marinello, our assistant principal, and Michael DeChinero, our guidance chair. But really, this is a full team and collective effort. We have Claudia Rodriguez and Angelique London in, with us tonight as well. And I know Heather unfortunately is dealing with some personal matters. But we really see this as a very collective effort around guidance and everyone contributed a role in the presentation that you're going to see and hear from us about tonight. You know, when I was going through the hiring process and when I was meeting with the board, one of the things that was very clear to me was that there needed to be a focus around our guidance program, specifically the anticipation of hiring a new guidance chair. So really, in some ways, tonight gives us a perfect opportunity to talk about both my process of becoming a principal and evolving through that, as well as how Michael's come on board and really how the three of us have created a leadership team at the high school and certainly one very clear focus for us around guidance. I know I've mentioned that this is truly a collaboration and something that includes our guidance counselors that have been in place for so many years and give us such a backbone of the work that we do. But we also see opportunities, and we've already started to tap into ways to expand that collaboration, both within the school, incorporating more faculty, and really eventually the entire faculty in a process around guidance, but also the extended school community. And we really see guidance as impacting so much functionality in schools that it needs to become a very broad and comprehensive understanding for all of us. It's only been three short, but yet really comprehensive months that we've truly been together as a leadership team and starting to align this focus. So please understand that as we go through the presentation. And really, one of the messages that we're saying is that this is a continual working process and you're going to see our conscious thought around that and how this is a learning experience. And it's a learning experience that's going to keep cycling itself year after year after year throughout time, so that we're continually building upon the strong efforts and work that we start at this point in time. The presentation really should provide you with understanding and insight around a couple of key things. Number one is philosophy and goals of the guidance department. Number two is our focus on student advocacy, and that is always going to be a primary focus for us. Not only in terms of their overall well-being, but certainly in terms of their pathway to college and career. You're also going to hear about our growth plan centered around a purposeful learning process. You're going to hear about a comprehensive four-year high school model. You're going to hear us talk about our current state analysis, what the three months have shown us, what we've learned about our guidance program, where we are. You're also going to hear about steps that we've already taken to try to enhance what is already the foundation of our guidance program. And you're certainly going to hear about a plan for next steps, both short-term and long-term. And really, overall, you're going to hear about the direction of our guidance program. And I know we're really excited to stand here and to present it to you tonight. So on that note, as I mentioned, Deb and Michael and I are all equally going to share within that process of the presentation. As I mention that, I hand over the clicker to Deb. And really, the opportunity for us to start getting into these nuts and bolts. But before we get into those nuts and bolts, we're going to start by just going through some of the top-side philosophies and understanding of what our guidance program is all about.
I'm going to begin our presentation with this framework for vision for our guidance program. And the core of this foundation or this framework is research-based, from both the National Council of Association of Counseling, as well as the New York State Association for School Counselors. And embedded in our work and the thoughtful process that we took in designing this framework is really around these three pillars. These three pillars are at the heart of any good, strong, comprehensive school counseling program, first being the college and career path and the pursuit of our students' their life beyond Irvington High School. Their social and emotional development and our commitment to knowing that this is such a pivotal pillar in terms of acknowledging that our students' emotional well-being is so critical to their college and career path, as well as the final pillar, which is their academic achievement. And really focusing on meeting students where they are when they walk in our doors, supporting them in their academic achievement, and not only supporting, but also maximizing how they see themselves on that path. These three pillars are not in isolation each. They're interwoven and they're embedded. The success of each of these pillars is dependent on the success of the others. So you'll see that each of the pillars is sitting on a foundation of what we believe to be at the core of the work that we need to do and the work that's currently being done. And that are, those are our systems. Systems, our processes, and around communication, around technology, around the works of the people in our buildings, that really supports these three pillars. And it's the core of what we do to support these systems that's going to create these pillars to have the strength that they need to be conducive to a comprehensive program. Dave spoke about our belief in collaboration. So my question is, why do we call this a framework? Why not state this is our vision and this is our mission? It is our core belief that we feel that change is not something we do to people, it's something we do with people. And in order to build our comprehensive program and involve all our stakeholders, we have a genuine and true belief that in order to build these systems and in order to enhance our program, we have to involve people in that collaborative work. And that happens not in isolation. It happens through dialogue, it happens through a continuous cycle, and it's at the core of what we believe. So when we look to the process that we want to take, at the core, we have our programs, our systems, and our strategies. And in order to do that, what complements our belief in collaboration is the belief in a learning cycle. And that the work that we're going to be engaging in, whether it's our current state analysis or whether it's deciding where we want to go next, we have a true commitment that we're going to be working within this cycle. That we want to first develop our plan, we want to implement and identify those opportunities for the work. But through that work, we consistently and continuously, through strategy, want to evaluate and reflect on our growth and take steps back to decide where is it that we're going and are we achieving the goals that we set through our process of development? And through that reflective process, we continuously go back into that development cycle. And compare it to the ideas of action research. It's data-driven, it's collaborative, it's through dialogue and it's through collective work, not just through a leadership team, but through engaging our counselors, our support staff, our staff and our faculty, as well as our stakeholders, our community, our students and our candidates. So it's our commitment to this cycle that is really going to help us to unpack what you're going to hear about in terms of where we are, but also to set into motion the idea that we're going to develop, implement, and evaluate and reflect continuously. But in order to do that, we have some work to do. And we have to really identify our long- and short-term goals that will be our springboard for the work that we're going to do.
So the first thing, as Deb just mentioned, is we wanted to start looking at our long-term goals and figuring out what it is that we really want to accomplish in our guidance program. So the first thing that we talked about was fostering a strong partnership between student, family, and community. And I always like to talk about the triangle of success. You may have remembered hearing me talk about it when we first met. But I've always been a believer as an administrator that when students, the school community, and the parents really work together, we support a structure that maximizes student success. So certainly, it embodies the work of our guidance program and it's something that we're continually going to be looking to do and work on to make sure that that triangle is really strong. In addition, we want to instill and develop confidence in our responses to student, to support student achievement and growth. And one of the things that I think of when I think of this bullet is transparency, as well as the concept of communication. And I know that there are two equally important factors that we're continually talking about. And we know that it's very important... And we know that it's very important for the school community and the extended and broad school community to have confidence in the work of our guidance program and in, in the commitments that we already have in place and that we are going to continue to build upon. And our ability to not only work on our systems, enhance the processes that we have, but to also be transparent about it and make sure that we're effectively communicating this work is going to go a long way towards doing just that, building the confidence and building the program the way we want it. In addition, our long-term goals include consistently analyzing and assessing the comprehensive instructional curriculum to best align students to a 21st century global society. There are standard subjects that you're going to have in any high school throughout America. And then there are also opportunities to try to create other opportunities for students. I know that recently, we had Mercy College representatives in to celebrate Mr. Barry and, as he was selected for Teacher of the Year. And one of the things that that led to was a conversation that I had behind the scenes with some of the Mercy College people. And now we're trying to engage in partnership around creating opportunities for technology-based classes, things such as app design or animation. We see these, and our guidance program sees these as opportunities to start enhancing what we provide to students in terms of coursework and how to make sure that we're better aligning our students to success in 21st century global society. In addition, we're going to continuously identify and implement systems to maximize our ability to support students, parents, and school personnel in an effort to best prepare students for their experiences beyond high school. So I know you heard Deb talk about that at the foundation of our pillars are our systems. If our systems are not strong and viable, and if we're not making sure that they are supporting our process consistently, then the pillars don't mean as much as they would without those strong systems in place. So we will also equal, equally give tremendous concentration and effort towards making sure that those systems are robust and that they're always functioning strongly. Whenever we look at long-term goals, obviously, those become broader and then we need to drill them down and narrow down to say, well, what is the immediate work at hand and what are our short-term goals? So we were able to then take those long-term goals and pare them down into these short-term goals. So first and foremost is to analyze the college process and develop plans for improvement. And I certainly know that as a new Principal, I've heard from many different people throughout the community and throughout the schools about our college process and opportunities that we can already start to talk about for improvement, but certainly always focused on the ultimate goal of how the high school is able to move our students forward and where they go after high school, college, career, all of that is crucial and critical to the work that we do. In addition, our short-term goals include analyzing and improving our scheduling process to better align our course offerings to the individual and comprehensive needs of our students' career and college goals. And you're going to hear more about that throughout the presentation. We also want to further engage the school community by establishing an environment of proactive communication and student advocacy to support the academic, social, emotional, and college career growth of all of our students. Again, we come back to those three pillars. The next is to streamline our data reporting systems, such as eSchool Plus and Home Access, to enhance efficiency and accuracy. There's no secret that when I first became Principal, there were some issues with this system when we transitioned from last little year into the summer, and I don't need to backtrack and go through them. But we are working very, very diligently to make sure that A, we have more reliability within our system, but also putting some very strategic measures in place to make sure that it's going to be long-term gains and that we're going to see that effectiveness in the system carry forward. In addition, we want to increase the Guidance Department's overall capacity to support student growth and success by creating and providing strategic opportunities for professional development. It's our ability to look at our councils and say, how do we better support you and what kinds of things can we put in place to advance your learning and your knowledge base? And then finally, our short-term goals include fostering stronger collaboration with faculty in order to better guide students in their academic decisions. And we really see this, going back to what Deb talked about, as an opportunity to really bring this whole process full circle around collaboration and making it not just a process that takes place in four offices in our main office suite, but that it's consistently and continuously taking place throughout our, all of our walls and floors and, and our school building and our extended process, because this is the essence of our work and it's what's critical. So these goals are comprehensive, they're certainly focused on pathways to college and career, but there's more than just that. And certainly, as we start to get into the nuts and bolts, it's really important to understand that we do, we have a comprehensive four-year plan. And we're going to start sharing that with you now.
All right. So I think we've mentioned, while the goal of our students is to attend college or start a career after they graduate from Irvington High School, it cannot come without careful planning, which is consistent, clear, and comprehensive. As you can tell from this slide, we kind of picked it that shows that the freshman year, you've got a smaller circle, and then as the years grow throughout the high school, they become more and more important, leading up to that senior year where they're actually applying to colleges, looking at careers, and moving on after, life after high school. So Dr. Harrison had mentioned at the beginning of the program that this was going to be a six through, six through 12 guidance presentation. We've kind of narrowed it down to a nine through 12 for time's sake, but we cannot forget where the roots began, and that is basically in the middle school. They do an incredible job down there, working with our kids regarding many different subject areas around self-esteem, technology, stress management, of course, academics, and the first steps into this career and college process that begins in sixth grade or even earlier and moving up through the high school. So while our focus is going to be nine through 12, I don't want to forget that as well. Okay, where am I? All right. So to the nuts and bolts, the next few slides are going to go through exactly what we do with the students over those four years. The first one, and probably our first contact with freshmen coming into the high school, is that freshman field day down in Matheson Park. It's an opportunity for us to talk with them, walk with them, get to know them a little bit, kind of observe some of the group activities that are going on with their senior peer mentors. It kind of breaks that ice. So that's our, our first contact that we have with those freshmen over the first four years. But then again, we have many and multiple contacts with them. We, just on the week of the 16th coming up, we're going to actually introduce all of our freshmen through the English classes to Naviance and set them up with personal accounts. And so we'll show them a little slideshow and show them how to navigate it a little bit. And while we're in there, we're actually going to have them do a learning styles inventory, which is asking them about 100 different questions about how they learn. So it could be things like, am I happy with, you know, good grades? You know, do I do my homework on a regular basis? Do I like being told what to do? Do I like studying in a cold environment as opposed to a warm environment, in a, in a quiet, or do I need noise around? So based on those answers, it can kind of give a little snapshot of those students can actually learn best so they can move forward. Now, we plan on sharing those results with teachers and with certainly with parents as well, so that we can, you know, hopefully help them start a good path within the high school when it comes to studying and getting positive grades. Also, in the freshman year, we'll go back on Naviance and do what we call a college mascot search. So basically, they'll go in there, we'll give them, you know, a college and say, go find out what the mascot is for that college. So they, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head, but, you know, we might give them Ohio State and they'll go on.
Oh, come on. She has two Michigan grads up here. After, after this weekend, you're going to throw Ohio State out there? My lord.
So see, you guys would be great at the mascot search. So that's where we're trying to get our freshmen and get them involved, get all colleges.
Might want to try the Flying University of Michigan next time.
All right. So we also meet with them individually and go through course selections for their sophomore year. So we take in all the input that we have and all the, you know, information that we get from teachers, from parents, and from students of what their interests are, where their capabilities are, and we select a very selective and challenging sophomore year for them. We started off theirs, this year with parent meet and greets. So we had little group sessions, the counselors all broke up their, their freshman alphabet into two different groups, and we got to sit with the parents and kind of expose them to this four-year plan, which I'm showing you tonight, so that they get a snapshot of what their kids are going to be involved, as far as we're concerned, over the next four years. We began the year with freshman interviews. What that means is we actually met with each student individually, and we did a freshman interview. We asked them questions about their family, we asked them questions about their goals, who their friends are, what their strong subjects are, maybe what their weaknesses are. Do they want to go to college? What might be a major or something they're interested in? This is a, again, just to kind of start a rapport with them, to get a snapshot as far as what makes them tick, so we can better serve them as we go on to the future years. And then finally, is college and career night. This is a new thing that we're hoping to put together in the spring. And basically, what we're going to do is open up a college and career night for ninth through 11th graders. So it might be broken down into two or three different sessions of 40, 45 minutes each. And we're going to have workshops that are targeted for ninth graders, 10th graders, and then of course, the bulk of it will be for the 11th graders in that college process. But it's going to get a good way so that parents can come in each year through that process and get a little different information that may be pertinent to that grade level when it comes to the college and career process.
Hi. Yes? It would be very helpful to me
Yes.
if you could highlight what are the, some of the new things
Okay.
this year, because it's, I'm not that familiar with the process that existed in the past, since my kids aren't of this age. So if you could highlight some of the things that you and the team have introduced this year.
And, and Michael can do that. I will also let you know that in the presentation, there's a slide, there's some slides specifically about new things that we've done this year. So there will be a focus on that, but we'll do that throughout as well.
If you could, if you could.
Not a problem.
But this entire slide, is it correct?
Not necessarily, no. They, they've always had field day, they've always worked with Naviance, you know, over the past few years. They've done learning styles and college mascot search. They meet with each freshman to do course selections. They never, you know, the, the parent meet and greets, you know, certainly while we invite parents to come in and meet with us throughout the year because of different various things, this was a formal time for them to come in and get a, a four-year snapshot. The individual freshman interviews, we just kind of formalized it. So we came up with a theme and, you know, made sure that we met with all freshmen right within those first couple months, because it's a real, you know, you know, for some of the students, they transition very well. Other students have a difficulty, so we want to make sure that we touch base with them, you know, right off, right off the bat. And the college and career night is a new initiative that, you know, we're, we're going to try and plan down the, in the spring, or we will plan, I should say. In the sophomore year, we continue on with meeting them, we provide instruction in career planning, including a career interest inventory. That is actually done through Naviance. So again, we will get them into the computer labs or individually, and we will work through Naviance, and they will do a career interest inventory, which is like 180 questions, it seems like a lot, but it's asking them very basic question as to things that they like or don't like, have interest in or don't have interest in. Like, do you want to work outside? Do you want to work with your hands? Do you, would you rather, you know, you know, work with people or work alone? So based on those answers, Naviance or the interest inventory actually spits back at them possible careers or majors that they might have some interest in. And then it's a way to actually go in and look at those careers and explore them with videos, find out what kind of money they can make, what the job outlook is like for those particular careers. You can look at what you might have to go to college for as far as a major is concerned, and then you can link that, link that major with particular colleges. So it's kind of a nice way of getting them, again, back into Naviance, which is a tool that they have to really know and how to use over their four years, and being able to link careers, interests with colleges and majors to move forward so we can create a good solid four-year plan for them. We administer the plan. The plan is the practice S, the practice ACT. So certainly, you know, it, the ACT after they get the results back will, will give them an idea of how they may score on the actual ACT. It actually kind of rates them or ranks them next to their peers, whether it be here at Irvington, or New York State, or across the country. It gives them some ideas about their strengths and their weaknesses, whether or not they're ready or not for college classes. It will also talk and match possible careers again with them, again, putting all of that focus on academics and career and moving forward. And it also gives an opportunity for kids to start making connections with colleges. So it's a great tool for, you know, every sophomore to take, to, you know, there is no downside to that. Again, college and career night, we're going to have some workshops that are directly focused on sophomores. The counselors will once again meet with them and talk about course selection. The sophomore year is a huge year. It's a transition from sophomore to junior where they can start taking multiple AP or college-level courses. So certainly, there's a lot of planning, a lot of teacher input that needs to go into that. There's a lot of parent input, a lot of communication back and forth, so we can set a plan for them and set a schedule for them. Then again, it's challenging for them individually, that's going to meet with their goals and their career objectives. We initiate the college application process for students with school-based accommodations through the ACT and the SAT. The earlier you start trying to get accommodations for these college-bound tests, the better off you are. So we would like to initiate with all of our students with 504s and C and IEPs to go through that process so they can try and get the accommodations that they get here at school through the College Board or ACT.org. And also at this time, it's not on the slide, but this is the first opportunity that we go in and we talk to students in the AP Global class. It's the first AP class that they've been able to take in high school so far. And so we go in there and talk to them and encourage them to think about taking the SAT twos in that, in that world history as well, because after they're done with that program, it's going to be the best time to, to sit and take that exam. And a lot of the students that are in those classes are looking at selective colleges, which a lot require those SAT twos. So it's a good opportunity for them to go in there and, to take that examination. So then we move on into the junior year. This is, you know, probably the biggest year as far as college planning goes. And, and not just the planning, but also the follow-through and putting things together. So at the beginning of the junior year is when we encourage all juniors to take the PSAT, which is the Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test. This is the practice test for the SAT. It also qualifies students that are juniors for the National Merit Scholarship Competition, which here at Irvington, I think we had five or six this year, and we constantly have three, four, five, or six, which is a great number compared to other schools of our size across the nation. So our kids do very well on that. We encourage, we send information home to sophomore parents regarding this as well. Sophomores can take it if they want to practice for the PSAT. Again, they won't score as well as they would if they're a junior, because they have, they've got one less year of academics under their belt, but it's a good opportunity for them to at least get their feet wet, go in and take a standardized test, so that when they actually take the PSAT as a junior, when it counts for the National Merit, they may have some practice under their belt. Sometime in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be getting back those results from the PSAT. And so what we do is we give those results back to the kids, we mail home results to the parents with interpretation, so that they can see how they compare again, like the ACT with college-bound students, how, where their strengths and their weaknesses are. And it actually gives them a individualized tutorial with their strengths and weaknesses and how they can improve those. So when they go to take the real SAT, which counts for college admissions, they'll have the best chances of getting that score that they're looking for, for the colleges that they're looking at. Again, planning for college and career opportunities through group and individual conferences. Starting in January, we'll have a junior parent night, which very, which very soon right after that, we'll actually have large group meetings with juniors to go through the whole college process, the nuts and bolts, so to speak. So they've been working for years to this point. They've been challenging themselves, they've been staying active in school, they've, you know, done everything in their power, hopefully, to put themselves in the best position for college. And so now it's actually time to, to start working through the process. So we'll be sitting down with them multiple times, doing a college search, trying to help them match their interests, their abilities with colleges that are out there. There's, there's a couple thousand four-year schools out there, and there's that perfect school for every student out there, but they're going to be applying to multiple schools. So we're looking at all those different variables and trying to get them to look at the best schools for them. You know, we're talking to them about getting teacher recommendations, about putting together a resume. We talk to them about, you know, what they're going to write their college essay about. We're trying to get more and more information from them. We're trying to get more and more information from them, because the counselors over the next three or four months are going to have to write thirty, forty, fifty, sixty college recommendations, and those take at least an hour per student to write. And we want to get that information from the students, we want to get input from the parents, so that we can write that perfect recommendation. And we also want to help them write that perfect essay, which is going to help them get into the college of their choice. Informal meetings for parents regarding post-secondary planning. I mentioned that we have a Junior Parent Night coming up. We're going to show parents how to navigate the college process. They will get that stuff in the freshman year, we'll send them more information in the sophomore year, and we're going to flood them with information in the junior year. And we are always available to help them navigate this process one-on-one if they want to sit down with the family. College and Career Night, I talked a little bit about the freshmen and sophomores. The juniors, it's going to be the meat of the program. You know, sixty percent or seventy percent of the college night, or career college and career night, is going to be for juniors. So we're going to expose them to workshops, how to get into selective schools, navigating the SATs and ACTs. We can do things about the, the four-year SUNY schools. We can talk about careers, we can talk about college visits. There's multiple workshops that we can offer. We're going to be offering them at different times so that they can meet some of their needs, or hopefully all of their needs, and get all of their questions answered. Once again, we'll meet with them individually and do course selections for their senior year. Still a very important time to course, to select courses. They still need to challenge themselves, they still need to take rigorous coursework. Colleges are going to want to see this all four years, including their senior year. So, you know, not to, not to, not that the freshman or sophomore junior year are any less or more important, but it's important to build a good four-year program that is not only going to help them get into college, but more importantly, when they get to the college of their choice, we want them to be successful. So we want them to continue on with that transition from high school to college, not only getting in, but being successful there. And then providing students with multiple pathways to meet with college representatives. We encourage kids and we, we show them to college fairs. We have over a hundred and twenty individual colleges come to Irvington where, where the students can actually sit, sometimes one-on-one, sometimes in small groups, depending on the interest to a particular college. We, you know, every year we have, you know, twenty or thirty kids that sit for the, you know, the Michigan rep, and
Well done, Michael.
We're meeting the Ohio rep, but I'm learning, see? But the important thing is that we, they have a ton of opportunities to talk to college reps and really get a feel for them and start building that rapport with the colleges. And it also gives us an opportunity, because we meet with every college representative, whether there's kids that are talking with the college representative or not. They'll come in, we'll offer them a cup of coffee, we'll get to know them, we'll get their card, we'll make sure that we have that rapport, get any of the new things that are coming up within that particular college, if they've got a new program. I just, you know, a school in Ohio just started a new, you know, engineering program, and they're dying for students. And so they're giving up big money. So if I have a student, or we talk about it in our weekly meetings, that might be a school that comes on our radar if we have somebody that comes across our desk that's looking for, you know, petroleum engineering. So, you know, we, we certainly look that close at what our students are interested in, what's hot out there, what colleges are looking for certain majors, so that we can help our students navigate that process as best we can. And we're always looking for different ways as well to kind of enhance, and I think David said, you know, increase our capacity. For example, Dr. Harrison just sent an email to us regarding a potential college fair at Mercy College in a few months. And they're going to be targeting students who speak English as a second language, and students with disabilities, and maybe first-generation students. So certainly, that's an opportunity for one or two of us to go there and to start targeting maybe some of those colleges and finding some programs, or those little diamonds in the rough for some of our students who need that special college. So we're always looking ways to, to enhance our capacity and helping our students. So then moving into the senior year, we've done a ton of work, the students have done a work, the parents have done a ton of work. So in the first two months, we meet with the seniors, not once, twice, maybe three times, depending on how prepared they are, to fine-tune that college process, to look at the colleges which they've selected, do they have it listed in Naviance, is everything up to date? Have they asked for their teacher recommendations? Where are they within the college process, writing essays? We certainly work with them on the Common Application, which many of you heard this year was totally revamped, and threw everybody for a tailspin, especially the colleges as far as working with that, so we worked and navigated through that. We have informational meetings for parents regarding the college process and financial aid. We had a Senior Parent Night, which we focused on the online application and how we went from snail mail and sending out applications to actually do, doing most of it electronically this year. We provide students with multiple pathways to meet with college representatives. Again, I mentioned, we have over a hundred and twenty colleges come here and gives them an opportunity to talk to different college representatives. We guide them using Naviance to finalize the college search, we show them how to submit college applications, research more information on scholarships and special programs that they might have. In the, in the, I think it is January, we'll have a panel of alumni, students, come back and, you know, in the gymnasium, talk to students about transitional issues, you know, things that they're going to experience when they get to college, and so they might have a little insight as to how to help them. Certainly in the past, and, and we're looking at still running different workshops, life skill workshops, collaborating with student assistance counselor, and doing transitions to college, you know, talking about credit card debt, some of those things that, you know, the high school students don't have a clue about and get hit, you know, smack right there when they get to college and they're trying to navigate that first semester at college, and, you know, they don't do as well as they possibly would like. So hopefully by the end of the senior year, May first comes, they, you know, obviously have to make a choice, where do they want to go, looking at financial aid, we provide different workshops, you know, as far as that goes as well. So we're open to meeting with them numerous times after January to help navigate some of those paths as well. And then certainly not to neglect or forget all of the other personal stuff that we do with the students in grades nine through twelve, or six through twelve for that matter, regarding, you know, stress, peer mediation, anger problems, relationships that they have, healthy and unhealthy, changing family dynamics, divorce, grief if somebody has passed away in the family, life skills, social skills. Those are things that counselors do on a daily basis with freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors every single day of the year. So, you know, a lot of those services, you know, take up a lot of our time as well. And you can see that through ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, we have no, we have over a dozen formal contacts with every student. That's formal. These are things that are in writing that we're definitely going to see. Most of the time, we see students anywhere from twelve to twenty times, or even sometimes more, depending on the students and their needs and where they're coming from. So we have a lot of contacts with the students. So this concludes the day-to-day activities that we go through, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade and twelfth grade. So where are we? This is a big slide that I put in. Over the past five years, Irvington student college applications and acceptances have demonstrated the following trends for the nation's most selective colleges, according to U.S. News and World Report and Barron's Review. I did some analysis through Naviance, looking up applications, and to those top schools, we're talking about the top thirty to forty colleges in the country, talking the best, we're talking Ivy Leagues, we're talking all of the top schools. We've actually, in the last five years, had students apply to fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-five schools in the top forty colleges across the country, which resulted in three-hundred-and-sixty-three acceptances. Now, you may look at that number and say, maybe it's a little bit low, but if you look a little bit more closely at the data, trends show that we are at or above the national acceptance rates for most colleges on that list. And I just listed a few of them there, Brown, Penn, Cornell, Dartmouth, Columbia, Chicago, NYU, Emory, Georgetown, Northwestern, okay? Those schools we are, are at or above the national averages of acceptance. Trends also show that we are below the national acceptance rates for some select colleges like Harvard, Princeton, Yale, Amherst, you know, Boston University, Middlebury. So, you know, while, you know, we're, I can't believe the job in which, you know, the counseling center does, and, you know, the colleges that our students are getting accepted to, there's still a little bit of work that, that can be done. You know, why aren't we up to the national average on some of those schools? And what do we need to do to continue to be at the national average or above the national average with those colleges that are there as well? So while the college process is central in terms of our overall work with students, our current state of analysis certainly goes beyond just the college. So I think Deb's going to talk a little bit about that.
So as we continue with our current state analysis, we're speaking to this question, where are we? And a lot of that has to do with the unique capacity that Dave and I and Michael bring, and Dave bringing years of experience as a high school principal, he's certainly seasoned and impressive in his ideas and what he can bring to the table, and Michael with his experience as a counselor. And then you have me coming in with a perspective that's quite different. And my approach to looking at high school is not, really not embedded in terms of what I've known high schools to know and to do, but to look at possibly seeing it with a vision for what is exactly what, that we want for students. And one of the questions that I continually ask, and it's at really the foundation of one of our pillars, and that's the social and emotional growth of our students, is how we support students' social, emotional growth. And what we found, our current state of affairs, is that we have a strength in our individual counseling. I've had, been able to witness the, the goings and comings of students in and out of that counseling department. They seek their counselors out. We have a very informal process, students can walk in, in speaking to the spirit of Dr. Mo with the open door, and that never is a door closed to our students. I've witnessed that in our counseling department, with each of our counselors, as well as Michael coming in new, as well as Dave in my doors. Students walk in freely, and I think this is a part of the culture at Irvington High School that we can be very proud of. We also see the network of peer leadership. It goes beyond the program. And where we identify peer leadership as one of our most proud ideals in terms of our seniors and what they look to be as peer leaders, we also identify it as an area in which we want to establish these peer leaders as pillars for these students and mentors for these students. And I've watched these peer leaders take on their role as more than just the weekly meetings that they have, but also kind of watching out for their freshmen as they're in the hallways. And as we look to develop and support and design a peer leadership program that's explicit in its instruction, we also need to honor the fact that these seniors take this position very seriously, and they really take under their wings these freshmen that enter into our hallways for the first time. I've also been able to witness, and we've been able to do some analysis, on the leadership that our guidance counselors provide in the IST meetings and the process of planned interventions. IST is our Individual Student Study Team, and counselors come together, and this is unique for a high school, because we don't have teams. And we have grade levels and courses that are quite separate and often work in isolation from each other. And IST is a, is a place that I would call a think tank, for counselors as well as our support staff, our student assistance counselor, we have our community advocate, we have Dr. May, our school psychologist, as well as our counselors, we have special ed staff and regular ed teachers that come to the table to provide an opportunity for us to really support students in all levels of their growth. As well as seeing the counselors see themselves as, as key leaders in terms of our 504 committees, our CSE process, the communication with the PPS office, as well as with administration and our school, our student assistance counselor. So it really is looking at our guidance department, not in isolation, as Dave referred to them as four separate offices, but as a network for student support. We've also been able to look at the current use of our informational systems, and you'll see that where we are is described as basic. What that means is we have certain things in place, and we've identified areas in which we can enhance. For example, our website. We have a website, it's up and running, but how do we enhance it? How do we provide opportunities for community members, parents, teachers to navigate through that website and be able to find quickly the information that they're looking for? Naviance is certainly enhancing our program, moving things completely online to speed up the process, as well as all the offerings of Naviance in terms of the career opportunities and the questions and the enhancement that it can give our students in the college process. We have a current course catalog, and we've identified this, and I'll speak a little more in the next slide, how this course catalog can become a better tool. It's a way for us to look at what we currently offer, but how do we build the capacity of our course catalog? And I'll speak more directly to that in terms of its relationship to our master scheduling. Parent nights and emails and newsletters, how do we enhance our communication? How do we offer not only a one-way road for communication, but how do we foster multiple two-way, as well as networking our communication? So where we've identified where we are as a basic utilization, we also see that as opportunities to enhance these tools, to really build a comprehensive program. So this next slide also is a current state analysis, and you'll see that we've described our scheduling process as fragmented. And I want to preface that with although fragmented may feel that it's not working, it's certainly not broken. One of the things that I, we've discussed very recently is that we do offer a robust selection of courses for a school of our size. Students have opportunities to take many different types of courses, but what we notice is that in the words of fragmented, we have to look at how our course offerings, our alignment to Twenty-First Century intertwines with our master schedule. Being new to a high school experience, I can only compare a master schedule to the backbone of your body. It is the backbone of your high school, and it is interrelated, it is a woven piece of fabric, and if you don't look carefully at the systems within your master schedule, you lose a sense of your efficacy. And there are opportunities for us to look at our master schedule and drill down and examine how there are conflicts. So for example, when you look at a master schedule and you see certain course offerings. So in our course catalog, it is something to be proud of that we offer AP courses, but in our master schedule, when we have two courses such as AP Calculus and AP Physics being offered at the same time, we've created a conflict for students, where they're forced to make a choice. And when Dave spoke about this four-year plan, this projection to building students' vision of themselves and where their capacity is, they may walk into high school having an idea of where they want to go to college, but what role do we play in unlocking that capacity for them to really see the potential that they hold within themselves? Our master schedule, we don't want that to be, play a role in keeping our students from really having that transcript that those colleges are looking for. Class sizes, we've identified bubbles in our master schedule and our daily activities. We have particular content areas, for example, social studies in Spanish in particular, that our class sizes are quite large comparative to others. Some of this is a function of your master schedule, where other courses are offered, how students are being tracked and streamlined in certain periods of the day, which has caused, I guess, I would call it a traffic jam in terms of the options that they have, where other periods of the day don't seem to have that load where other periods are, are holding. So when really in the terms of efficacy, yes, where we are, we have a fragmented scheduling process. It's not broken, we have wonderful offerings, but we've identified an opportunity to strengthen this backbone. If I could share personally, my husband is a chiropractor, and he would say, we, he, our, our schedule needs an adjustment, and we need to really do some analysis on where that adjustment needs to be done so that we can be in the best working shape that we can, that our body, our school is working the way that it should. The next bullet speaks to the realities. An inconsistent leadership in the guidance department does not speak to the fact that something was broken, but over the last four year, five years, excuse me, there have been four different chairs. And the comings of goings, we, we want to believe that change, as we spoke about in the beginning, is not something you do to people, it's something you do with people. And change does not lie in your leader. Change lies in the people that are doing the work. So for us, it's about shifting visions. Even though the vision hasn't really been different, whenever you lose your momentum, it kind of, you have to restart. So it kind of feels like we've been stuck in that traffic jam. And then identifying, as Dave and Michael had shared, ideas and opportunities for professional support and development for our guidance counselors and our support staff, is really at the core of what we want to do. So we identify that there's need, and now the work in terms of looking at our cycle is implementing where those changes can happen.
So we've really outlined a very comprehensive look at a four-year plan as well as where we are, and we're trying to be realistic and honest and, you know, recognize where there are infrastructure aspects that we can certainly build upon. So the next question logically then is where are we going? So the next question logically then is where are we going? Obviously, there's a major focal point that we have in this presentation around the pathways that we create for our students to have life beyond high school and specifically college and career paths. So the development of a comprehensive college process that aligns students to colleges that best meet their individual goals and needs is just critical and core to the work that we do in our guidance program. And while I think it's important to recognize some of the trends and data that Michael pointed out when it comes to the most selective colleges throughout the United States, I also know that as a community, certainly our goal is never to be average. Our goal is to be elite, and that is my expectation and the pathway that I want to make sure that we're on. So while I think that Michael's slide and the trends that we see show a strong foundation of how we are getting our students to succeed in terms of their college searches and especially around some of the very selective schools that exist in the country, we're very committed to making sure that we're on a pathway to keep improving and to see that improvement happen this year and then to happen again next year and the year after that and the year after that. And the way we do that is through that learning cycle that we've talked about. We make strides and steps each year, we reassess and understand, and we set new targets and goals. So certainly this year is a lot about assessment and evaluation, but as we are talking about and continue to talk about in some of our very specific next steps, looking at this comprehensive college process is one that is central and core for the work that we're doing. In addition to that, we certainly want to maintain our strength in supporting students' social and emotional needs while considering opportunities to enhance the school culture. So, you know, I've had a lot of people explain to me, but we've also seen it, that certainly our ability to support the social and emotional well-being of our students on a daily basis is truly one of our strengths in our guidance program. And certainly we want to maintain that. It's a critical and core need that we have for our children. That being said, we also see opportunities to expand upon this. And I know some of the work, like our seniors networking with the middle school and the character and the character building program and the work that we're doing to transition that, obviously the foundation of peer leadership, but even opportunities, and I know there's been a lot of discussion around different assembly programs and various things. And while I know that that's been part of the school culture in the past, we're looking at it as ways to be very strategic about how to expand this whole concept of how we as a full school community and as an extended community in Irvington support each other's social and emotional well-being. In addition, we are developing informational systems, and we need to consistently develop them that are going to be comprehensive, easily accessible. I know Deb just talked about the website, and I know Michael and I have spent a lot of time this year talking about, and I've heard from parents repeatedly, that it's very difficult at times to navigate our website. And that's something on us to make sure that we're tightening up and making sure that the information we put up there is current and timely. And I know that we have a ways to go, but that's certainly a very immediate goal for this year to make sure we're working around that. And that the information that we're providing is pertinent and meaningful. And the ability to put that information in people's hands, especially our parents and our students, without having to ask for it and wait for it, is critical and core to our success. So these are very central themes of where we're going and the types of work that we want to do. In continuing on with this theme of where we're going, the notion of a comprehensive and collaborative scheduling process to best align course offerings with student success in a 21st century global society. And I know Deb just did an outstanding job of talking about the backbone of a high school, and it is our master schedule. And, you know, our ability to support our students' pathway to college is based on how well we can provide them with these amazing opportunities in their classrooms. So I know I spoke a little bit earlier, just a tad, about even partnerships with Mercy College and ways that we can use that to expand our course offerings. But I know that as we're heading into the scheduling and the budgeting season right now, we're going to be putting an exhaustive amount of effort around looking at the process, understanding where with a more thoughtful process, we can even just take the current course offerings that we have and align it in a way that gives more opportunities to more students, and that is central and core. But in addition to that, how do we also create other opportunities for courses and things that are going to help move our students forward in this 21st century world that is so dependent on technology and new skill sets, quite frankly? So that's really important. But we've also even talked about how to make it more collaborative, the idea of teachers working with their students at the end of the year to talk about potential course recommendations for them in their next year in that subject. So if you're in your algebra class, your teacher can help guide you towards how you perform this year and how they think that's going to translate to math opportunities in the future. And as we start to make this a more collective and comprehensive process, there's going to be a lot more conscious thinking around these important decisions around students and how to schedule them and how we build them forward. And then finally, through clear leadership and direction, the Irvington High School Counseling Program will consistently grow as a professional learning community guided by a comprehensive vision and mission. That will create empowerment. It will make sure that we are providing supports to our counselors with professional development, and this is something that we're very immediately committed to. Things as simple as providing supports that they can go on more college visits and that they can gain more exposure and advance their inventory of information that we can provide to our students. I know Michael has already implemented weekly meetings with the guidance department and certainly plans to continue them. Data-driven decisions, analysis of things like where our students are applying and getting into colleges and some simplicity that we shared with you tonight. And certainly making this a shared decision-making process. We know that this is critical, and the better that we can do it, the more successful our students are going to be. So certainly, we've spoken a lot about where we are, where we're going. Now what we want to talk about, and I know Phil you had asked, so we're going to be very pointed about it right now, is what have we already accomplished this year and what are the types of things that we know we've implemented as new, which are going to certainly help build more opportunities for growing this department and the program that we have?
So some of the new things that we put into place already and that we've done or maybe put a new twist on a little bit was number one, ninth grade parent meet and greets. While we would love to have something like this for all four levels, we thought it was imperative to start with the ninth graders, show them the process, show them the four-year plan, show them what they've got in store for them and for their students over the next four years. I think it really went well. The parents there were very appreciative, and I think they got a better or a more clear, comprehensive understanding as to, you know, how to help their kids throughout the four years. We've already done a lot of enhancement to the usage of Naviance to support the college application process. I think my colleagues can attest that, you know, just last year, we were sending out thousands of envelopes with transcripts and teacher recommendations, and teachers had, you know, stacks of, you know, envelopes on their desks. All this has been cleared out, and we've taken the electronic approach. So we can now, you know, send things holistically to the college, which I cannot, you know, which has got to be better than getting it piecemealed. They get it within hours as opposed to days or even weeks sending it to snail mail. Now, while we still have to send some things out like that, the bulk or the majority of applications went electronic. Created initial interventions to develop a better accuracy and efficiency with our student reporting systems. There were some, there were some currents with transcripts and with grades, you know, when I first came on board, but I think we've cleared that up. And I think part of that was due to the, you know, the different leadership over the last four or five years and the different people who have created the master schedules, and there just hasn't been that consistency there. So we went through every transcript, we went through every report card, just to, you know, be assured that we have accuracy of the things that we're sending out to colleges and the stuff that parents are seeing on, you know, e-scholes when the grades go out. We thought that was probably top priority on our list to make sure that we got a grip on that. And I think we're pretty confident that we've worked out, you know, all of the bugs and, you know, while there's still maybe some things that pop up from time to time, I think we're in a much better place than we were, you know, just three, four months ago. Consistent and targeted email blast to parents and keeping students informed. While I know there's been communication in the past, you know, I want to continue to do that and keeping our students and our parents informed of all the different workshops, opportunities and things that are coming on board. You know, while we host a senior college night every year, this year was a little bit different in that we focused on that online application process and the importance of making sure all your Ts were crossed and Is were dots when it came to the application process so that we could, you know, have a very, you know, you know, smooth transition. And it actually was. One of the things that I don't know if I mentioned on one of these slides was teachers, for the first time this year, also put all of their recommendations online. So we could connect that with their college applications. They did an incredible job of meeting those deadlines as we came in and we pushed it forward a little to them to get things done a little bit quicker, but they did a really phenomenal job for our kids getting those in so we could get those applications out. We're implementing weekly guidance meetings, as David talked about, you know, to try and foster growth and consistent practices throughout the department. I think I mentioned it. We all kind of met with our freshmen, you know, every year, but this year, we all did it within the first six or eight weeks. So we made sure that it was a, it was a goal of ours to do that so that we could catch any students that may have a little difficulty with the transition and get to know our students right off the bat. What else is done? God bless.
Thank you.
We finalized the development of a new school profile. While that was in the works with Sitebase and a few other people last year, Dave and I came on board with the help of the counselors and some others, very supportive people. We put together what I think, or we all think, is an incredible, you know, work of art and a great tool that's going to not only help our students get into colleges, but also supports the district and what their goals are to, you know, maintaining an incredible school district at the high school level. We implemented a process of report card review. I talked about that a little bit. Before report cards went out, myself and all the counselors, we looked at every report card and we made sure that there weren't any mistakes, you know, things that weren't where they're supposed to be, so that we were pretty confident that they were accurate when we released them to the parents. Individual freshman interviews, I talked about that. And I also touched on online student recommendations by teacher, which was a, which was a big process and went flawlessly. So still to do this year, although it's been three months and, you know, I think we've crammed a lot in so far, there's still a lot of work to be done. So Dave touched on developing and implementing a collaborative and comprehensive course selection process for next year, you know, which includes making sure that we communicate with teachers, we talk about the honors process, we communicate with parents and make sure that we're, you know, having the students' best needs in mind. We're going to extend our usage of Naviance with current junior students. We started a little bit late with that whole college electronic process. Now that we've gone through it once with this junior class, it's going to be incredible the things that we can do and the efficiency that we can have with that particular process. We're hoping to increase college visits for my, you know, for the guides counselors to advance the department's capacity in guiding students through the college process. Dave again touched a little, you know, on that, and we're hoping to, you know, get out there and look at some different colleges, talk to them. We're going to be holding a college night for students and parents. We talked a little bit about that, and I'm not sure if it's on the next slide or not, but we're actually going to be hosting a college fair here at Irvington High School as part of the River District.
Quad Village?
No, River Town.
A River Town.
River Town, yes, River Town. So we're going to be including those high schools and we're going to be hosting it here at Irvington, which again gives our students another great opportunity to meet college representatives and start that college process. Enhancing the website to ensure information is current, pertinent, and easily accessible to students and to parents and to outside community, college representatives or potential families that are moving into the district and want to get pertinent information regarding our school, especially our guidance department. We've already implemented that each one of us counselors are going to take a different grade level, and we're going to put a recent article on the web every month, something that pertains to a ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grader. So we've all taken a grade level, and we're going to start that at the beginning of the year, just trying to keep up with trends within the website. Engage in deeper analysis of past college data and trends to better inform our processes for guiding students to colleges and careers. I talked about some numbers that I was pretty happy with, but don't mistake that we have room to grow. My goal, what I would love to see, is that Irvington High School, Irvington students, our college applications for those top schools are all at the average or above the average. I don't want to see any of the schools on that list have our students fall behind, fall below that, the national, you know, average. I'd like to see us at or above. And so we will further analyze our data reporting systems, e-scholes, plus home access to ensure accuracy and reliability. You know, our biggest thing is our transcripts and our students going off to college. And if that data is not accurate, then that's just going to do nothing but hurt our students. And so that's, you know, top priority for our department is to make sure that we don't have any of those problems ever again and that we have 100% accuracy moving forward. So, all right. So while we've talked about a very comprehensive insight to the work this year, so far analyzing the guidance program, looking at areas of growth and putting a plan forth, you know, which brings us back to the big picture. And I think Deb will just kind of touch over the last couple of slides and.
So just to begin our closure, so many of what, so much of what we shared today is identifying the areas in which we want to do this great work. And in order to do sustained work, sustained work is embedded in a process. At the core of what we want to do is to continue the examination and the enhancement of our programs and our systems and our strategies, but we have a genuine and true belief that this has to happen within the sustained cycle of learning. And as we continuously enter ourselves back into this cycle, take steps out to really evaluate and reflect on the work that we're doing, it's never ending. It's continuous and evolving as it should be, and we're committed to that process and committed to that work.
Which kind of brings us back to where we started and the notion of our framework and our vision for what a guidance program is all about. And it brings us back to our three key pillars. Certainly central and core is college and career pathways. And, you know, you've heard it from all of us tonight. We understand that that is a core and crucial need of focus that we must always have. But at the same time, the best way to really support our students along that goal is to equally make sure that we're supporting their social and emotional development and well-being and certainly their academic achievement. What we recognize is that this isn't about just trying to push a process at the back end, that this really starts in the entire school district at early ages, but certainly at the high school level, the second that we start gaining access to our students and the ability to communicate with students and parents, and the more that our guidance counselors can start to do the amazing things that they know how to do and that we can best support them in. And once again, it comes back to our systems. Our pillars are only going to be as strong as our systems that create the foundation. So as I've come in, as Michael has come in as a new leader, and certainly as Deb and the other two of us build this new leadership team within the high school, we're spending a lot of time looking at our systems, being very honest about where there is need and opportunity for growth, and putting together very strategic plans to make sure that that's going to happen, both in a short-term level and in a long-term level. So I thank you for your time tonight. We certainly put a lot of thought and energy behind the presentation, but most importantly, hope that it gives you a lot of understanding about the comprehensive work that our counselors and our comprehensive guidance program is all about at this time of the year. Thank you so much.
Well, to the team, certainly, thank you. The thing, the one thing that really rung true to me is honoring the many wonderful aspects of the program and the people that have been a part of that program and making sure we continue to build upon them. But there was a team piece here, not only to your presentation, but about your approach to how you're preparing our kids for the future and, you know, looking at the scope of, you know, what has been done with the three of you as a leadership team, working with the rest of the staff. And we're saying three months, Michael, you started sometime in mid-August, I think, was your first day here.
July 1st.
July 1st. You had your months off in between, but the thought of looking at, you know, the level of work and collaborations taking place is pretty impressive. So, thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, let me start and go down.
I think this was extremely helpful and it's really encouraging to see all the work through and see all the progress we have changed and improved. And I found it very helpful. It's very nice. What, a bunch of questions. What kind of outreach do you do to colleges now? Are we going out to visit them or are they kind of, you know, really, I don't want a long answer, just want to know what's going on, is there going to change?
Well, certainly, as counselors, we're continually invited to different events. So there may be a breakfast to go and visit a campus about a program, and so we'll continue to do that. I know they've always done that, go to individual college visits. I also know that- I also know that, you know, I have already, and my colleagues have already, reached out to individual colleges to inquire and ask questions about an application, or a trend, or something that might be needed for a student or a parent. So we're constantly reaching out and trying to make those connections, and, you know, being part of the, again, you're going to have to help me out, the Westchester Area Councilors, what's it called?
Westchester Council.
Okay, so it's a counselor association that's shared by all the area colleges, college and also high school representatives, and so networking and getting the word out and just making phone calls. And as I mentioned, we meet with every college representative personally, one-on-one, who comes into Irvington High School, with a handshake, with can I get you a cup of coffee, building that rapport, and making sure that they have a good experience.
There were, it sounds like we mostly depend on the, on the, on the.
No, there are, like I said, there's breakfasts, there's things to do, there's college tours, so, things like the Hoot Tour is a college tour in Ohio, I'm sorry, that, you know, you can visit like eight colleges in five days, so, you know.
Stay out of Columbus, Ohio.
John, if I can speak to that a little bit also, I know one of the things that we've talked about doing, you know, one of the things that's very important is to make sure that our students have very similar experiences, no matter who their counselor is, we believe in all of our counselors as experts. So, one way, and one of the things that we've talked about is using parts of this year to start creating almost an inventory of where each of our counselors has done college visits, to start to share that information, use these weekly meetings that Michael has identified and talked about, to make sure that we're sharing that information as much as that we're getting new information. And then, we as a district, and certainly for me as the building principal, making sure that we're creating budget and opportunities to then send our counselors out to do things like the Hoot Tour or the opportunities. But we don't necessarily have to send all four counselors. If we send one on one tour and another on another, et cetera, et cetera, they then share those experiences so that we collectively become experts in the entire process.
Absolutely. My hope is that over time you'll develop better relations through college, especially in the selective college.
Most definitely.
Because we keep hearing, you know, that O X, Stevens University doesn't know Irvington or whatever. Yeah.
Can I just echo John's point about that, I mean, just to, I'm not taking your, I was just going to say that I think it's really important that you develop kind of a reporting process to do exactly what John asked, which is to be able to gather exactly who the counselors are meeting with, either here, that's important, but even more importantly, there at the university, and for you to be playing that back to the community, at a minimum to the board, and so that we know what you're doing. And over time, you'll develop a report that will essentially highlight, you know, areas of opportunity where you maybe should have gone to certain colleges, and then that kind of dovetails with the actual acceptance data that you shared earlier. Sorry, John.
Well, while we're on the subject of acceptance data, I don't, I'm a little concerned that the acceptance rate should be our standard of success. You can get great acceptance rates by just having kids accept at schools that are too easy for them. And it's, it's, so I'm concerned about that. I, it's a concern to me that that's the one metric that we talked about. And I think we need to think more about how to be evaluating the success of our college process than just that students can't be getting into colleges, they're not here with all this. So, I hope that point's clear, but I think it's important.
But I, if I may, John, I think the point that was trying to be made there wasn't that, well, we're picking a singular metric to assess the effectiveness of our efforts, but I think it was a point of looking at one opportunity where there was a select group of schools that we were above the norm in our acceptance rates, but there was another portion that we were below that level. And I think the goal wasn't to say that, you know, we want to be at those national norms. I think it was a goal, the objective was to look in at ourselves and say, hey, there's areas that we're doing well, but we're acknowledging that this is one piece of evidence as to why we're doing this.
That's really the best test of how we're doing well.
Well, yeah, I mean, look, I got, I got to jump in here because frankly, I almost think you can't look at this data with the Common App, people throwing things out. I mean, I think those numbers mean absolutely nothing to me. I mean, a national average for whoever decided to throw their hat in the ring to arbitrarily, I mean, I don't know what that means. I mean, if we had 100 people in our class apply to Harvard, then that's going to bring us down. If we had one person applying and he got in, then all, it just, and every year is different. I kind of think that data is very misleading. I mean, I think we need to try to develop some sort of a matrix for, I don't know how to do this, but for each student, there should be reach schools, there should be like comfort level schools, and there should be safety schools, I guess three levels. And for each student, you want to get some, how do you quantify that? So how are we doing individually? I mean, looking at the top 40 and coming up with the national average absolutely means very little to me, especially in the days of Common Apps. So, I really hesitate to even look at that data.
On the other hand, we do, it's nice to try to reach for some kind of way to down the process overall, and to do something to do with individual kids, or someone's, do something for them. I guess I'm sympathetic to that.
Yeah, but it's very hard, I mean, a hundred and twenty, I mean, at least if you're Scarsdale, you've got some sort of a database that's a little more significant, but when you have 120 kids in a grade, and, I mean, we see it, each grade, each year, your numbers are going to be very different. I mean, each, some years we just have really strong classes, and some years we have classes that maybe these, this isn't the pool of schools that they're really looking at. So, you know, it's, really, it's kind of an interesting thing to kind of draw a line in the sand with. I mean, as a data point, maybe, but I don't know.
I would be interested to know, I mean, you can, you can, the same person could be applying to lots of different schools and may come for multiple acceptances. I would be shocked, too, if he's been applying to lots of places and may come for a lot of acceptances, but that person's only in that, what he works on in that one school. So it'd also be interesting to see what our trends and where people are.
Mike, you were a brave man for throwing that slide in there.
Yeah. But John, to your point on that, I mean, the one thing, and I know like two years ago, I think we saw some really interesting data that was pulled from Naviance, it was getting to the board, and the one thing that was so interesting that year is we had a variety of kids go to a variety of top-tier schools, a strong class. But the interesting thing is that only one, from what we saw, I'm oversimplifying, but the kids who went to, say, Dartmouth or Penn or Cornell, didn't get into the other schools. So it actually wasn't that one kid got into all the schools, it was we had unique kids get into each of the different schools, which I thought was really interesting. I'd never seen data like that before. So the kid who went to, you know, Dartmouth didn't get into any of the others, and the kid who went to Penn did not get in, applied. And it was really, I'm just taking this one year, but it was really interesting to me. And, I mean, I would like to get into that a little more and see if that was unusual for that year, or if that's something that Irvington always has. Such an interesting, because usually what John said is more common. You get one high flyer who gets in everywhere, and then, you know, they kind of skew the results, but you're talking about one kid. As opposed to, for us, I thought that was, actually was a good thing. I think it spoke volumes about the breadth and the depth of, you know, Irvington.
Well, you're right to, in the sense that this is an important issue for us. How does, you went through all the stuff about your career, career planning, career assessment, all that, not knowing what that's about, but, you know, how does that connect to the fact that I think for a lot of, a lot of students, I don't know if it's a portion of students, but for a lot of students, they're looking at going to kind of selective liberal arts oriented colleges, aren't really per se places where you're going to have a career decision before you go. And that the process that they're going through is different from doing a career adventure when you're a sophomore, and if you're going to use your example, petroleum engineer, or nurse, or whatever else they're going to do. So, I mean, how do you factor that into the career advice process?
Every step of the way, I think it's our goal for a student to narrow down their experience, and narrow down their focus. So while, you know, a freshman may come in with a focus of careers this wide, some freshmen by the time they exit high school, they may be like this. Some may be more like this. But as long as we keep narrowing it by giving them experiences, talking about their strengths and weaknesses, looking at their interests, you know, their abilities, and matching all of those things up, and starting to narrow down their choices. So while they may not know exactly what they want to go to college for, and many students don't, they at least might have an idea of what they don't want, based on some of the experiences and things that they've, you know, been exposed to over the four years in high school. Some kids come in in ninth grade and know exactly, I want to be an engineer, and they apply to an engineering school when they're a senior, and they become an engineer, and that's what they do, while other ones change their mind over and over again, right up until, you know, the end of their sophomore year in college, where they have to declare a major. So, I mean, that's our focus, is just kind of narrowing it down. For some students it may be a little, others it may be more than that.
Can I just say, that's the first time I've heard that before, this concept of narrowing down. Is that typical? Because it seems to me that getting a sophomore to narrow down his career choices or her career choices at the age of 15 or 16, that sounds kind of 1950s to me. Can you, I would just like to hear other administrators expound upon that, because I don't get that logic at all. I'm sorry to challenge you, Mike.
No, no, that's okay. With every, with every experience that a kid is exposed to or has, they start learning a little bit more about themselves. So, you know, how that narrows down depends on student to student. But as we go through life, we know what we like, what we don't like, and so we start going that way. It's not to say that they can't switch things around and there's not those opportunities.
The way you said it though, sounded a little dogmatic to me, to my ears. That didn't really sound like the spirit of a high-performing school district that is going to try and send the majority of its students to high-performing colleges, elite colleges, where sometimes you don't even decide your career until you're well into your college experience. I mean, I went to Tufts, I went to Tufts and had a liberal arts, no one ever asked me what career I wanted to go to when I, when I was at Tufts. They didn't push us at all, even when we were at, you know, at the age when we should have been thinking about it. The liberal arts experience is a very different experience.
Mike, it's an experience where you're kind of, you get, you get out of it and go, oh my god, what am I going to do?
And I guess, I think it's, it's an important matter, because I have heard from some parents in our community that in some of the discussions they've had with our guidance team, that the discussions have sometimes felt a little pre-formatted, I guess, that there is this desire to get a student to choose, and, you know, not every student wants to make that choice, and I'm just wondering how you kind of navigate that.
So let me respond to that a little bit, Phil. For me, I don't think, I don't think the goal is to pigeonhole students. I don't think the idea is to try to make sure that the majority or the bulk of our students understand exactly their career pathway and their choices before they leave high school. But what I think that this is about, and I know the conversations I've had extensively with Michael, is this is about, there are so many colleges in this country, and each one has its own unique opportunity and experience. So our daunting task that we take seriously is to try to best align students with colleges that we believe they're going to be most successful at, to support them in a whole host of ways. Some of that is their academic support, some of that is what does that college specifically offer, how narrow or broad, and based on that whole process that Michael talked about, how we get to learn and know our students, starting with the freshman interview process, and not leaving it at that, but seeing how that evolves and develops in four years, we hope that we become experts in helping steer that. We certainly don't want to make those decisions for our students, and we're not looking to narrow their choices. We're actually looking to expand their opportunities in life, but sometimes too much is too much. So the idea of how to align our students to the best choices for them, and to articulate them, and then I think Robin brought up the great point of understanding where the reach schools are and where the safe schools are, and what's right in the middle. When you put all that together, that's where the comprehensive process, I think, comes together. So I understand your point.
And I wouldn't have been so persistent if I hadn't heard the comments from some parents in the community that actually kind of echoed practically what you had described theoretically, and that that's where the concern for me became real. So, I just think it's something that's worth exploring, because, and maybe it's just language, because maybe what you really meant is I have to gather as much data as possible to understand what a student's range of options are. Sorry.
I think we'd have to keep coming back to that, you know, the thing that we've been, we're looking at a group of people that have come together and are working together for three months, and they're learning what needs are, they're learning all the many successes that are there, trying to build upon them. And I have to say that, I think this, they've done quite a bit of work in a very, very short period of time, and a piece of the equation that's going to take time is for them to tap the other resources that are in the community, that's the expertise that our guidance counselors with experience have, teachers, former students, and reaching out to students that have gone through our schools, that have gone through college, to see what those experiences have been and how we help prepare them for those experiences, or not in some cases. So this is, I think, a beginning. This is the tip of the iceberg, I think, of what we're going to begin to experience here.
Yeah, I think we all agree with what I'm saying. See what's happening, what happened. So I was going to ask about the outreach to alumni, to graduated students, to see what's worked for us, or do we have some challenges, or how these.
And it's something that we quickly identified, I don't want to take up too much time, I know that we have Dale here, and I certainly want to make a public thank you to the PTSA. We had our first ever alumni brunch last Wednesday for alumni that typically come back and want to visit the school, and in an effort to make that productive and welcoming, both for our day-to-day operations of instruction, but also for the alumni that desperately want to come back and visit their alma mater, we came up with the potential idea of an alumni brunch, and the PTSA were incredible in their support, but one of the ideas that came out of that is to start really getting an inventory of our alumni information, starting now with as many past students as we can, but also creating an infrastructure of doing that each year with our current seniors, so that we do have communication with our alumni, not only in terms of gathering information, but quite frankly, in terms of fundraising, in terms of efforts of growth in the future. Not that we, you know, want to tap into our students to feel that they have to give back, but there could be opportunities there. So it's, it's, it's an open opportunity and one that we are very excited about tapping into.
Right, and also to kind of help us understand what's worked, broader than college, what are they, how are they compared to, to colleges here? Do you know, do you have any insight into the extent to which students are using either college counselors and professors to align on the guidance system here?
I don't, I don't have any data on that.
I think other than just hearing a little bit about it, we don't, we haven't been able to tap into any real resources and data that would keep us in touch and around each other.
And my last question is, what are you, I'll take it in somewhat general terms about how to change the scheduling process, and I have heard firsthand, secondhand, I guess, about, you know, scheduling things where you've had big differences in size of high school classes, in science and social studies, or Spanish and social studies, for example, or, I know there are always issues where kids can't schedule, but how are you thinking of changing that? Do you have any sort of more concrete answers?
So I know I spoke to some of that in terms of getting teachers more involved and, you know, giving students more and more guidance around that process, but for me, it's also about first initially working with our department chairs and talking about what courses do we want to offer next year? Is our budget aligned to that? Are there any additions that we want to talk about? You know, we're working with our English department this year around revamping and articulating a comprehensive curriculum. One of the things that's come out of that is whether or not we want to have potential focus on writing in the ninth grade. And if we do, does that happen in a regular core class, or is that in addition? If it's in addition, is there budget to support that? Do we have enough teachers? So as we really start to unpack and think about that, we think about just an overall course offering that we want to have. Then we start to tally with kids, and we start to get an understanding of the types of classes they would want to take. Then we look at that data. Then we look at that data and we start to align where those classes need to be throughout the day, what needs to be early in the day, what needs to be late in the day, which classes we need to make sure that we avoid scheduling at the same period. And through this ongoing, very comprehensive process, we eventually lock into a master schedule that we feel best supports the maximization of opportunity for students. So I, I know I'm probably still simplifying it, John, and I apologize, it's a very comprehensive process and one that's going to take a lot of people, you know, I walked into David Sotile's office in the middle school today and I saw his scheduling board that sits up all year round, and I know what my process was with the people that I worked in from the place that I came from, and we're still talking and learning and understanding whether we need our own scheduling board or a different process to make sure that we're most effective in doing that. But it is literally getting down to the granular level of being strategic for each class along the way.
If I may, Maria, my apologies. I, I'm just having concern with, with time and that we have a whole crew of people here again tonight, and I know all the questions and comments are important, but we're fast approaching quarter to ten and have another extensive presentation prepared for this evening, so I think we need to be considerate of that if we want to move forward. I'd hate to send folks home and schedule them to come back at another date again. So I don't know how much more we have.
Right, well, I have a very specific response to that. I think this is incredibly important, and unless we're going to have them come back next week or the week after so we can ask our questions, I think we need the time to ask our questions.
I mean, I think-
I mean, if I felt like we had the opportunity to do this again in two weeks, I would say, fine, let's, you know, wrap this up, but we get to do this once or twice a year.
Yeah, I agree.
I have like, I have like eight questions. I don't know how to, I mean-
I don't know how to balance the next presentation, but, and you said the next presentation's quite long as well.
We can either postpone the other presentation, or we can schedule another time for our-
I think it's important that we, we continue with this dialogue. I'm just trying to be mindful of everyone's time and, and, and looking at where we are and didn't anticipate that this was going to be necessarily two-hour dialogue, and I'm not trying to diminish that or take the audience away.
It's important.
The presentation itself took over.
Exactly. Our questions have not taken an hour. So wait, do we want to come to-
No, I was just, I was raising the point.
The next presentation, or?
I'm happy with either solution.
Why don't we continue at this point and let's assess where we are?
Okay. Just gonna, my highlights here. One, I really appreciate this presentation, I think it was great. I appreciate your honesty in it, both the strengths and areas of where we can improve. I particularly liked your last slide about your plans for this year, that you can really get to this year and thinking forward. The one thing I just want to make a statement about, you know, the various comments about, from the school board members about reaching those select schools, but I also want to make sure that the other schools where kids, you know, might have a particular interest in boring state in a little, in a, you know, school in Ohio State could be the best in a certain type of field, but might not be that, you know, select school, that big name school. That doesn't mean that our kids are not doing well. Like, I want to make sure, and it sounds from your presentation, that our kids, you're, you're steering our kids towards the schools that fit them and their interests, and it might not be Brown, and it might not be Harvard, but it's the school that fits their needs. So I just want to make that point clear. I was very excited to see, it was mentioned in several slides about professional development for the guidance counselors, because I'm a big believer in professional development. You've talked a little bit about visiting other schools, and, you know, different counselors visiting other schools, that's a great way of using our resources. What other professional development opportunities are there for our guidance counselors in addition to visiting schools and building our relationships?
Well, certainly any training that might come along the way with better utilizing our systems, whether it be e-schools, I mean, I'm brand new to e-schools, and so I've only, I have not been formally trained on it, we've got some things coming up in the near future, but I know there's a lot of things that we can do with that, which I think could help counselors work with students and families and better plan together and, you know, look at things differently. That may be one way, I mean, certainly we talked about visiting colleges, networking with other professionals, whether it be going to a New York State, you know, Counseling Association Conference, or maybe a national conference to find out what the new trends are, what's going on for the 21st century, you know, whether it be, you know, directed, you know, strictly at the college realm, or maybe it's towards the career realm, or social emotional development, those different pillars that we showed on the different slides. There's a lot of different resources right here in Westchester. We have different organizations where you can go and listen to different speakers on a monthly basis, and, you know, again, networking with other professionals and bouncing ideas off as to what they're doing, what you're doing, and trying to get some information to better utilize the systems that you have to more streamline efficiency. I mean, those are all different things that I think we can, you know, if not individually or as a team, go and utilize to really enhance the counseling department, above and beyond just getting to know colleges as well.
And very simply put, Maria, that's also something, as leaders, that Michael, Deb and I need to be able to be focused on in, in terms of identifying those opportunities, and then bringing the opportunities to the counselors and certainly hearing their voice around what they feel are the best opportunities to explore here, Maria.
And one small question. I appreciate the effort that it seems like you guys have been putting together for four I'm hoping that this is a situation that's temporary, because it seems like it's very labor-intensive, and I gotta think that your guys' time is better suited to be spent in other ways. Is this, is this effort because of some technical issues going on with our program with e-school plus and home access, or, you know, I mean, this is a huge effort that you guys are going through to make sure that these, these records and the report cards are accurate. Is this something that you plan on doing going forward, or is this just a temporary measure?
Both. So, very simply, the system, when this, when Irvington transitioned to e-school plus, I think it was about three, four years ago, it could have been done in a more strategic way. So what we're really doing is in some ways backtracking to make sure that there's clear systematic delineation for each step along the way, and that will then, moving forward, ensure that those errors don't occur going forward. So that's a leadership thing, and that's really incumbent upon Michael and myself and Deb to make sure that we get it right. In the meantime, our counselors are being forced to have to do what you just described, go back and do a lot of spot checking and manual checking, and certainly the goal is to minimize the need to do that going forward.
I would just share, our middle school counselors do that as well. Read the report cards. Yeah. So maybe they read every single report? No, but our middle school counselors do exactly the same process, so.
And I just want to add, we also read report cards to look at individual students. So if we see a slipping grades or a kid who might be failing some subjects, we-
That's separate.
So, yeah, those were separate, but that's all, you know, so it's not like doing it is something that's never been done, but we're looking at some of the technical issues as well, just to make sure.
Do the calculations, are they done by hands, or by the-
The system does the calculations.
Okay, so the teachers don't actually sit there and figure out?
No, no, the system does the calculations.
What do they do in middle school?
There are issues and errors, and we, you know, I didn't feel that it was appropriate for us to send out report cards unless we knew they were going to be accurate.
Right.
Those are my highlighted questions. The rest of you go.
I will be focused in mine. Michael and Dave, coming into our community, you have a unique opportunity being fresh and, and you can bring a new perspective and analysis on what's working, what's not in our guidance department. What is the single greatest strength of our current guidance department, and conversely, what is the greatest weakness? You have to give me both. You can't just give me the strength.
I'll answer very quickly from what I've seen, you know, from, from my colleagues. I think one of their strengths is their knowledge within the college process, and right along with that is their weakness to acknowledge that. I mean, I'm going to call her out on it, but, you know, Claudia has this incredible resource of things that she uses, but nobody knows about it. I mean, she shares it among the counselors, but it's not shared publicly with, with the public. And we need to, I, I think somebody mentioned it, you know, it might have been Maria, talking about some of the positive things that we do, that we've got to get out there with the community and say, we do this, you know, we do all of these things. That was the focus behind the meet and greets with the freshman parents, is to say, look at all the things that we do over four years, you know, and they do an incredible job of that, but they haven't, like, you know, done that before. So, you know, I think they're a very strong team, but they need to show their strengths and, and, you know, and exhibit them to the general public, to the board, whoever is out there to look at the wonderful things that they do. And that was one of the, one of the parts behind that slide that I showed, because, you know, while I certainly agree, and I don't want to get too in-depth with this, with your analogy that you have to have target and you have to have reach and you have to have safety schools, but I think the counselors do a fantastic job of looking at the individual kids' strengths and where they're looking for and what their aspirations are and what their, your interests are around a particular college, and making sure that they're looking at all different schools, as well as stretching to those selective schools if they're not quite there, or making sure that, you know, they're looking at those diamonds in the rough. They might have a particular program that's incredible based on, on something that we might know. So I think they just need to utilize those resources and, and share them.
Dave?
So, from a strength, I will tell you that our guidance counselors care deeply and passionately about every single student that steps towards a school. I see that every single day. I see the amount of care that they give to our students who are in need on a regular basis, I see the amount of attention that they give to parents, and it's something to be very proud of within our just strength and concern, it's something I'm very proud of. And quite honestly, I would say, and it certainly resonated strongly in the presentation and its systems, one of the first things that we did when I first met the counselors in the summertime, when they came in on a day that was their summer vacation, was we started to talk about some of the issues that had been presented to me, and when I was able to give them some concrete examples of where some of the flaws in, in our process was, the answer that I got from the counselors was, no one ever told us this before. And to me, that was glaring. So when I talk about professional development, when I talk about the leadership and what four chairs in five years means in a department, it, it, it's real. And so to me, that is the biggest glaring weakness, and that is where it's incumbent on the three of us to support the care and, and the desire that our counselors have, to provide the very best for our students, and then it's our job to make sure that we're communicating effectively with them and giving them the tools that they need to do.
Thank you. When you did your short-term goals, I presume they were not in rank order of priority. Maybe you can't answer this right now, but it would be great for us to know, what is the priority? If the priority is getting our college process and systems in better shape, then let's be clear about that and say that, you know, that that is, because one of the things that's very clear about tonight's presentation is you guys have a lot on your plate, and I don't know really how you can get it all done, plus do the 504 meetings and lots of the mandatory meetings that you have to do. So my concern as a board member is that we are more focused and, and therefore that we should be more clear about what are our absolute priorities. This is a lot of short-term goals, you know, and it's something that we talked about when we were setting our own goals for the district, do we have too many goals? I think as you start to work through yours, I would encourage you to be really pointed about what is your priority. The last question is kind of a, a question that doesn't have a right answer, and it really gets to the capacity issue. Some districts, I would imagine, that are a lot larger than ours, have specialists in college support apart from counseling, because they strike me as being very related, but also two very different faces of the same coin. Is it really possible to, with this team, to provide the kind of service on an individual basis that students expect and parents expect, and do all this extra work of going to colleges and expect that we spread that out equally among the guidance individuals, the guidance counselors, and don't create any kind of specialty or specialists?
I believe the answer to that is yes, but I also believe that we need to be honest and we need to keep looking at that. So certainly we've articulated a plan to, to build better capacity for our counselors and to do just what you described, but then we need to be honest about the assessment once we start putting those, those interventions in place, and if we feel that it's not working, we need to be honest about why. And what you're suggesting may be a logical suggestion and outcome, that I need to go back to the district and, and make recommendations on, but I'm certainly not at that point, and I do believe strongly that we can do it.
Okay. And this is a small one. Do we have a guidance playbook that sort of shares with the, is that your question, Rob?
A lot of them.
Yeah. That it very clearly lays out what you did here for parents, so they know this is what happens freshman year, and it would be a playbook, it wouldn't be a PowerPoint.
The answer is, is I don't think we have a very good one. And I think that just, that goes along with my strengths and weaknesses for the department as I, you know, my three months that I've been here, is they, they're caring, they're hardworking, but it needs to be out there exactly what we do for all four years. It, it needs to be given to parents and students when they're a freshman, and it has to be on the website, and it has to be clearly communicated throughout the four years, because a lot of the things that we talked about, they're already being done, but they're not being shared.
Right, similar, similar, but to dovetail on that, when you're saying a playbook, I was also thinking, like, is there a master calendar from, you know, ninth grade freshman, you know, fall to senior year, so that parents going through it the first time don't miss something? For example, you mentioned the subject tests, when, you know, when you're taking global or whatever, but, you know, things like that, a first-time parent going through the process might not be thinking, oh, my kid should be kind of preparing for a subject test, they're going to need a few subject SATs or whatever, so if there was this kind of master calendar, then I think it would really be useful for the, you know, the novices, so to speak, who are going through it for the first time, probably make, make things easier.
Right now, there is not one on the website, but myself and the counselors just spent the last, I think, two weeks ago, and if you walk into our conference room, you'll see every month outlined with everything that we do for every month.
So you're kind of heading that.
So it's there, so, so now my next task is to take that off of these big wall calendars and to put it on a, on the guidance webpage, so that it's, you know, transparent to everybody exactly what you're looking for is a roadmap for those four years. It would individual folders for a specific ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade of things that are going on.
Right. I mean, clearly, there's so much that you guys all do and they cover a lot, but, you know, I guess one consistent thing for me is I'm much more like student-centric, like, how is all this going to best help each student? And, you know, so I kind of look at all this and think, okay, that what are the tools that we could create that will make it easier for, you know, each individual or each student going through? How do we better assist our kids when they're applying to college? So even, even the goal is, like, analyze the college process, totally important, but to me, it's like so that we can best support our students. You know, so to me, it all comes back to that and everything we do. You know, it's funny, there's been this overarching theme to me from the beginning of the night when Raina spoke to kind of when you guys talk, and, and so much of it comes back to technology. It's almost a little frightening to me in terms of changing the scheduling or making e-school plus and, and home access, figuring out a way to make it all work together. So I guess, I, I, my question to the guidance group is really from, from the technology perspective, is this something you guys are doing, or is this something you're working with Editac on, or how do we serve that? How do we support you guys from a technology perspective, so that these things that you think you need to do can actually get done?
I, I think Raina talked about it right at the beginning of the night, and some of the collaborative programs that are being offered with, with the, with the districts in this area, training on e-schools, you know.
She talked about professional development for classes, but I, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm worried about is, I talked to Raina about this too before, it, it just seems like there's so many individual things that we're doing that encompass technology, but I almost, I'm just going to say, I'm going to throw this out, I hope nobody gets, you know, feels like it's inappropriate, I almost feel like it's a tail wagging the dog. Like, I feel like we're being a little reactive to where we need to kind of focus on technology versus, you know, maybe as budgeting's coming down, we need to really assess what do we need as a district, so that we can have, you know, we know where we want to go, and then we kind of, we're working toward getting there, instead of- then we kind of, we're working toward getting there, instead of saying, well, this we need to do and this is technology and this, you know, like, we're going to do all these great classes with the teachers, which is fabulous, but do we know what kind of classrooms we want to have with technology in five years? And how do those classes that we're educating our teachers fit into that? So I, I guess I feel like, well, maybe, maybe we need to do bigger picture technology, and then, and then from there, figure out, you know, from a budget perspective, how we're going to accomplish it.
Robin, I think you bring up a great point, but it's, it's a tricky and dangerous one, because technology is evolving so quickly.
Yes.
That it, it's very hard. So I don't believe that, you know, it, it's the tail wagging the dog in my brief experiences here, but at the same time, I also think it's our ability to better really understand the systems that we have and how to better utilize them. You know, specifically in our presentation around guidance, I, I can see that it's a lot about that, and it's a lot about being able to do more with what we already have. You know, Michael spoke a lot about NAMMons.
Right.
And it was a grossly underutilized product. So, you know, in, in our experience with eSchools Plus and Home Access, isn't a flaw of eSchools Plus and Home Access, it's an opportunity for us to better learn how to set up and utilize our systems, so that it'll work the right way.
Do we have the people that can help you with that?
Yes.
Yeah, let me just answer any school. I, I guess I feel like this is, eSchool has, is separate from guidance. It is, it is a system and that we use district-wide.
Right.
And it is just one component, and yes, we contract with Bosse's, and yes, we have support for that. So I think that is, it's a separate system, we need to make sure that everybody is fully aware of how to use it, but it is separate, it is not an impediment for us getting done what we need to get done. I feel like if that's what you mean, Robin.
Not really.
Okay.
But I just want, like what David said, if we're looking to figure out how best to use it, do we have, do you guys have places to go that can help you do that?
But it's not how best to, I guess that's why I just want to clarify, it's a student information system. So yes, we have a support, we contract through Bosse's, that is our support for how to use it. So I would say yes, and that's not a guidance issue, it's a district-wide.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, we even talked about that with the portals. You know, if the portals are going to be offering things, is there more that eSchool Plus offers that we can tap into, and how do we make that all work?
Yes.
I mean, I, I got it, I just, I, how do we make it happen? And especially now, I feel like just a couple of things came up about budget, technology being one, about, you know, you, you mentioned, you know, maybe we need to do writing in, in ninth grade, and do we have the budget for it? And, you know, I think as a board, we, you know, we, we would love to hear what you guys would love, and then by that point, I think that dovetails again with the strategic planning. So maybe if we can't deliver it in year one or year two, maybe we can come up with a kind of a longer-term vision to deliver it in year three or four or something. But, you know, I think it's helpful to everybody to kind of get our hands around what you guys feel like is important to move, you know, your school forward.
I, I think when we're looking bigger picture, I think what we're talking to are all things that are embedded in our district goals, right? And looking at where we are. So when, if we're talking about needs as they relate to technology, well, that's work that we're, we're addressing district-wide. When we're talking about college career readiness and, and if there's needs and resources there, whether it's from a guidance standpoint, whether it's a programmatic, with, as Dave mentioned and you referenced, if we're looking at our English program in the high school and how that correlates to this, those are all items that we're looking at. And that's work that's been ongoing and meaningful from the beginning of this year. And that work is going to inform recommendations, it's certainly going to inform the dialogue that happens along the, around long-range planning, there, there's no question. I think when we're starting to talk about the, the role of technology in, in the functioning and the purpose of the guidance department, it's, it becomes very different than the dialogue that we're talking about instructional technology and what we want the classroom to look like. I think where we are, i- if there's a want or a need for technology from a guidance standpoint, I think we don't have any hurdles to achieve that. Where the challenges become is when we begin to look at the large-scale technology integration and the type of learning experiences that we want our kids to have, that's where the challenges become, because that's where we're talking about the broad-scale training needs that Reina referenced earlier on, where we talked about the purchasing of hardware to be able to provide experience in some cases, and then beginning to think about that shift in culture, about what does that environment look like? Does every kid need to have a computer or tablet in front of them, or does it become a bring-your-own-device environment? So those are the broad-scale conversations that I think that we're having associated with our work in the short time since the goals have been adopted, and the dialogue, I think that then carries over into big-picture work when we think about strategic planning and the vision for what we want that learning experience to be.
Okay, on technology. Okay. Just a couple more things. You know, you talked about, you know, each year, sophomore year, junior year, senior year. Did you, um, did you, do we currently provide any information to our juniors so that they can work over the summer to prepare themselves for the fall when the, when the applications kind of, when they have to kick into high gear essentially? I mean, because it just seems like summer, they could be actually doing stuff, I don't know. Do we ever think about that with the kids?
Oh, absolutely. They'll have a whole list of things that they need to get accomplished before the end of the school year, at the junior year, and then, you know, opportunities that we would encourage them to, to take part in, whether it would be directly associated with the college process, meaning going to visit, still continuing to narrow down colleges, or doing some sort of abroad program, or some sort of, you know, program near home to enhance their, you know, their resume. So certainly, we'll, we'll talk directly to them about what our expectations are, you know, to have at the end of the junior year, and when they come back September 5th, or whatever the first day is, what they need to have accomplished or should have accomplished.
Right. Okay, great. And then I kind of, I know this came up a couple of times, the whole idea of the database and, or some way to leverage all the knowledge that these guys have, and, and then, you know, I, I too feel that's really important, as you guys did. And then the other thing is, I know we talked about this a couple of different ways, but when you talk about specialization, I mean, do you ever, do you have certain counselors that kind of are the experts or the contact for certain colleges, or do we overlap? I, I don't know how you, like, do they, everyone, you know, has a contact?
What my vision is, is I may have a intimate knowledge of 200 colleges. Claudia may have another intimate knowledge of 200, Andrew another 200, Heather another 200. Between the four of us, if we have effective communication and we share information, that's 800 colleges that we have intimate knowledge, intimate knowledge of, that we can help, not only my students, but also the other three counselors. So by these constant, these continual meetings and sharing of information and consistency throughout the school year, I think that's, you know, we're going to help each other, which in turn is going to help each other's students indirectly.
But like, so you, you talked about the visit, like the Ohio visit, so if you were to do that, would you think you'd send all three of them, or would you send one of them? Kind of that person could become the eyes and ears for that area? Some, how would you kind of divide it? There's so many out there.
It depends if it's a tour that's in Ohio or Florida, I've gone on one in Texas, or if it's one that may be in, you know, in Philadelphia that's close. So I think, and then it all depends on the time of year. So there's a lot of variables. I would love to be able to send every one of us, or have every one of us go to all these college tours all at the same time, but that's, that's reality, that's not going to happen.
Right.
But again, I, I keep coming back to, if we share information and we talk and we're consistent with our practices, all the colleges are going to get this information, whether I had firsthand, you know, experience with it, or it was somebody else. And we do that already with colleges that come and visit.
And one other question, when we're talking about college acceptances, I know kids at some other high schools have talked about how they themselves go on and research their own database of their alums on Naviance, and they can see what kids, what profile of the kids, I don't think they get names, applied to what schools and who got it and who didn't. Is that something that our kids are also taught, or do our kids do that?
Absolutely. We, we, there's a couple of resources as they're searching colleges and their, and their data, their personal data is uploaded into their personal account, so nobody else can see that.
Right.
And the information that's available to them in Naviance is all confidential as well. So if I'm looking at, you know, Cornell, I can go to a scattergram and look at Cornell, and I can look at where all the other people who have been accepted to Cornell place within my GPA and SAT scores. So I can get a realistic snapshot of whether that's a target school.
Right.
A reach school or a safe school for me, as I build that number of colleges that I'm going to apply to.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we, we definitely use that tool.
Right. Okay, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that.
What is the current caseload per counselor? Is it really like 145 kids? No, that's...
It's about a hundred and a...
Looks like, it's easy math, right? Because it's whatever the class size is.
Whatever the average class size is.
Exactly, which I, that's why I said 145, because I think that's...
It's greater than that.
You don't carry full load.
Right.
He doesn't carry full load.
So you don't carry full load?
Because he's got other responsibilities.
Right.
Right.
So it strikes me that the challenge, you know, from a theoretical standpoint, is that you're not just, you're dealing with many-to-many, meaning you've got many students that you have to know on an individual basis, and you've got many colleges, which you just used the word, you have to know intimately, because theoretically, one guidance counselor should know 800 colleges, good luck with that, and then you should also know your 160 students intimately. That math, to me, I just find really puzzling and...
Challenging.
Yeah. I mean, I, it's almost a puzzle, because I guess the, the only thing that works in your favor is not every student is going to use a guidance counselor heavily. There are going to be some students who are very self-directed, whose father says, you're going to Tuss University whether you like it or not. That might be, need other kinds of counseling, but, but that's, I mean, there must be a way too of sort of balancing that, that, the workload in terms of, some students need more attention and, and help and others don't.
And I think as we, as we analyze the program and we evaluate it and look at it, there are definitely ways that we can work more efficiently and be masters of resources. And just for example, with the, just one example would be the college applications going electronic. You know, we're talking about sending and making copies and doing all of that just one year ago, to the ability to do this, to send out a college application completely and fully, and have it, have it holistically sent to the college and not have to chase pieces down and worry about whether they got there on time. I mean, just that alone, and I think they can attest to it, is a huge time saver. So as we develop through some of these processes, I think we really can get to a point where we work more efficiently.
Right.
And, you know, with all the systems that we have, and we can, we can do it.
Looks almost like you have to separate high-value stuff from low-value and somehow systematize all the low-value stuff, so you have more time for the high-value stuff.
At, at times, yeah, we, we have to do that, but, you know, and every day, our, our world can be turned upside down with some sort of crisis or thing that goes on, and then we, you know, we manage it and we don't eat lunch that day, right? So...
Two little things, sorry. I'm assuming this is, these systems are in place. What happens for kids whose families either cannot afford computers and internet access at home, or who choose not to, even though they could? Do, does the school provide resources, computers, access to them, so they can access Naviance and still experience?
Absolutely. We've got four computers within the counseling, within the counseling conference room that a parent or a student can utilize, or, you know, this year, I actually led a non-speaking mother through the whole process with, with one of our Spanish teachers interpreting, and so I helped with, you know, so she knew what was going on. So yeah, we, we have resources and, you know, we know our students and our parents intimately over those four years to know who's going to need that type of, you know, support through this process.
Okay, and just one suggestion, I think this is a very, it was a great informative presentation. Not many people realize that if you go to Board Docs and you look up the agenda, that if you tap on like this presentation, you get directed to the video, so they can watch it, as well as look at the presentation. Maybe, you know, in a future mailing, email blast, you might want to highlight this presentation that you gave and let parents know that it's informative and to take some time out to, you know, take a look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Oh, I'm up.
Oh, we've got them.
Um...
Sorry, not excuse yet.
That's okay.
Hey, I have some, please.
Yep.
No, I, thank you. I mean, I think we're, we're also...
Questions?
Oh, community questions.
Yes.
I'm so not used to being in this role, sorry. Yes, Catherine.
Catherine Johnson, I loved your presentation. I thought it was great, I thought it was wonderful. I am thrilled that there were numbers, even if they were bad numbers. I liked the numbers, I thought they were great. I really, I'm seriously, I, I just thought it was great, you know, a bunch of us have spent years and years and years trying to get, you know, data and comparisons, et cetera, and for you to just come in your first three months and put up good numbers and comparison bad numbers, just that in and of itself is, it, it's great. But Robin and John, if those, they're the math people, I'm, I'm a math camp follower, so I can, I can reason mathematically, but they know what the metrics are. If those aren't, if that's not a good metric, and I just assume they're right, you should just come up with the metric. You should come up, pardon me? No, you know what, John, I really believe this, you two are making perfect the enemy as a good. I, I think he has a metric, if there's a better metric, let's do that and, you know, and do it. In any case, I just thought that was, that was fabulous. The, a couple of things I would love to see added would be, and one of these things Marie and I have talked about, but one is probably the amount of merit aid kids are getting, because as Richard pointed out, you know, we never recovered from the crash, and we're in a minor depression, I mean, that's really what we're in. And it's a slow bleed, you know, it's a slow bleed, and this is something, the past regime at the high school, I was on the high school psych committee, and boy, the attitude then was, your money is no object, and it was just, you can spend $50,000 a year sending your kid to a no-name liberal arts college, and that's no skin off our backs, so, and the other thing is, we've talked about numbers, these numbers are money. You know, Chris, our son Chris did very well in the verbal part of the SAT. We would get offers of money just in the mail, you know, it would just be, it would be junk mail with an offer of actual money, you know, this is the only time in life that will ever happen to you. That comes from numbers. So I think it would be, I think it'd probably be good to see how many kids are getting merit aid, because, you know, you get that at your next tier down school. My other thing is, I always, the way I always envision continuous improvement or improvement is just that, you know, you take the whole Irvington bell curve, you pick it up and just move it down a little bit at a time. So, you know, the high kids are getting higher and the next kids, just a bit. So to me, it would just be, you know, just moving a bit in that direction. The other thing is, and this is what you and I talked about, I was, I've been concerned about whether we have grade deflation at the high school and probably in the middle school, and, and I'll send you the stuff, I don't think I've sent it to you yet, but this was a study, this is a peer-reviewed study that appeared in the journal, American Journal of Sociology, and you looked at schools like ours, so that's what he was looking, the study was this kind of place, and Stuyvesant and Bronx Science were in it as well. I don't know if our school per se was in it. And what he found was about 30%, which of course was a bell curve, it would be 30%, but anyway, 30% had grade deflation, meaning that their students for X SATs had lower grades than, so if it's, you know, if it's Scarsdale's here and we're here, and we've got grade deflation, if we have a kid with, you know, whatever, 2200, that kid will have lower GPA than Scarsdale. That's what he found. That, and when I did the math, it was just simple arithmetic, and I had the high school, you know, the high school profile, we weren't, we were in that category according to my arithmetic. So that was a few years ago, and I don't know if that's still the case, I don't know if that was right then, but I would love to see the high school look at that, particularly in light of, and I'll, you may have seen this already, but in light of, oh, it's just a big study just came out showing that grade deflation really kills you. I mean, they did this study where they sent elite applications to MBA schools, and sure enough, they picked the ones with the high, with the high grades. And even when they gave them context, saying, well, these kids aren't any more capable than these kids, those grades made a huge effect. So I would love to see us just look at what, you know, what, what are our grades vis-à-vis other places? And, sorry, I'll wrap this up quickly, but this is something, this is something Robin may know about, you may remember this, but when I was on the psych committee, the high school psych committee, oops, sorry, Francie, one day, she told us, she had pulled out her laptop with her friend at Scarsdale, so they got up there, the two moms got their laptops out, because, you know, you can look at the bubble of who gets in where. Scarsdale had a huge Scarsdale handicap vis-à-vis us, so, and Scarsdale, you had to have much higher GPA and higher SATs to get into the same school. So if you're getting into Dartmouth from Scarsdale, you have to be a genius, if you're getting into Dartmouth from Irvington, you don't have to be, you can be slightly below, you know, you can be somewhat lower. That is a very easy comparison to do. So I would, you know, I know you're fantastically busy, but at some point, I would love to busy, but at some point, I would love to see, you know, carving out time to look at, what's our, do we have a handicap? Do we have grade deflation, for sure, because we want grade inflation. That's what, that would be mine. You know, just where we are in terms of that.
I think that's, hang on, just look and see if anything else.
Catherine, can I, can I just add one thing today? Because as I, I mentioned earlier, some of my reunions over the past year or two, we've gotten some up-closings and personals with the admissions directors of undergrads, and one of the points they all make, and, and you guys can tell me if you get the same sense, is that, that as a college, they're current, they, it's their job to understand your school.
Oh, interesting.
And that where, you might be worried about grade inflation, like saying that school has a higher grade than others, but they said, we only ask that you take advantage of what your school does. So if you can't take such and such a class.
But that's not, that's each other.
No, but also the grades, and they're like, and we understand.
That's what they all say.
The level of your grades, and we're not gonna, they actually said, we're not gonna compare you to grades that someone has at another school, because we understand that mine. So I just, I don't know if that helps you at all, but I've heard two admissions directors say that specifically.
That's what those people said.
That goes to, that goes to being able to get, to kind of making sure we can communicate to colleges and letting them know what their, how hard it is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but you know what, you guys.
3.8 or 4.0, whatever it is in Irvington.
Yeah, but you've got to factor, you've got to factor it.
Well, they need to, right, they need, and they do also from historical data, but yes, we need to sell ourselves to the colleges.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but the thing you're not factoring in is, is the cognitive unconscious, it's a cognitive illusion, it's called correspondence bias. People think they aren't affected by that. But these, these admissions counselors all said, we do factor it in, we do look at the school, blah, blah, blah. No, when you looked at who they were admitting, people think they do one thing. You know, we really need to know, do we have grade deflation? Because that's a handicap, no matter how much we sell each other. David, I just want to say, you said, our goal is never to be average, our goal is to be elite. I just thought that was great. And by the way, I'm not an elitist, you know, I grew up on a farm, I'm from central Illinois, I'm a small, deep Democrat. It's just, you know, we have a, we just have a bright group, that's just demographic the way it is. I just, I've never heard that come from the high school, ever, never, 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 my whole time here, so that is really, that's great.
Any other comments, questions from the community? Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Well done.
Um, yeah, I think in terms of 11.2, I think we decided, because it was getting so late, Chris had suggested we reschedule them. Is it going to be at the next board meeting?
We'll do it on the 17th, but because, I think we have to begin to rework and rethink the whole presentation schedule, because if, certainly, we're going into great detail on our end, and, and significant amount of time is being put into the preparation to be as informative as possible, and recognizing the need for question on the other end, I don't think it's practical for us to be able to try to tackle two in an evening, so, unless we know they're going to be shorter subjects. So we, we have to rethink that approach a little bit.
Is it not possible to get this in on the 10th, next Tuesday?
Oh, next Tuesday?
Yeah, because we can't do, because if we're not doing any other business, and we just did the fields, and now I guess it's not possible.
I think we promoted it as that only, I would hate to muddy the waters, but it's a consideration we can think about and communicate otherwise, but.
I can't hear people.
No.
Okay. That, ends that discussion.
Okay. So next up is any questions or comments from the community regarding anything else? Yes?
Oh, I have a concern about the school district's email servers, and the programs that we're utilizing in terms of spam filters. My, I own my own business, and therefore I have my own website, which has its own email, and I've spoken to Elaine several times, and she's spoken to.
Edutech.
Edutech about adding my, this was going back like two years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, when I first, when I first moved into the district, and they, to this day, I cannot send an email to anyone in the district from my web company, they automatically get completely rejected. And then today, I was speaking to a group of parents, and two other groups of parents, meaning parents of two separate kids, not two parents, said that their emails to their kids' teachers end up in the spam filter. Apparently, with the, in the Main Street School, they're like today, and they're having the parent-teacher conferences, and several parents tried to email the teacher to change the time or do something else, and that there's a real problem with emails. I, I recognize that there's a lot of spam out there, and we don't want to waste teachers' time reading spam, but there seems to be a real problem, the, the ability of parents to communicate with teachers through email because of the spam filter that we're utilizing. And I would hope, I'd like to see somebody look into that, and.
Okay. They put, they changed something recently, and it created a much more rigorous filter, so we could certainly, it is blocking things that are not, it's blocking every other school district.
Even when my specific email address was added to the safe list, it still got rejected.
But if it, with the recent update, I think is where the concern came about, so we have to make an adjustment there. And yet, there have been, and I, and I say, as much as I understand and can respect the concern that, that comes up with that, and certainly, we don't want to have problems with, with folks, and we're sending messages out to teachers to review their, you get a quarantine email every morning to make sure you're reviewing that on a daily basis. But there's been a litany of viruses that are targeting public entities, and they're coming from Gmail accounts, Hotmail accounts, things that would look like a personal website. I, last night, had an email correspondence with one parent who was in a similar situation. So we're just kind of following industry standard right now, because these viruses are quite harmful. It's impacting districts terribly right now in our area, and we've been lucky so far, so.
I just wanted to let the board know that there was an issue, thank you.
Thanks.
My wife, she bails too.
All right, so, any comments or questions from the board? Nope. Um, next public meeting will be Tuesday, December 10th, it's going to be a special meeting, 7:30 in this room, and the focus is really to review the fields and capital projects. And our next regular meeting of the board will be, our last one of the year, will be December 17th at 7:30, same room. So, motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0. Thank you.